Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining for the March planning commission meeting. We'll start, if you would, with the pledge of allegiance. All right, we jumped into the roll call. Starting with our Mr. Shawn Warren Shaw, president. And I'm Phil Kaminsky. Sudan Spelling. Sarah Winger. James Rath is absent right now, as well as Stephen Maples. Okay? And beyond that, first order of business is the approval of minutes from last month's meeting. Everybody sent a copy of minutes? Any corrections, comments on the minutes? Here none? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Need a second?
I'll second. I wasn't here, but they they read pretty well.
Fair enough. Okay, all in favor? I, I, thank you. Okay, so jumping into today's agenda. We have one matter on old business and twenty-three, three items on the new business section. We will start with old business for PLC 2024-0003 for sixty-one thirteenth street. Is the applicant here? This month. I'll let the record reflect James Rath, who's now present.
Good evening. Hi, how's everyone doing? So, following basically, I was given a list of things to come back with for this meeting. And I'm fairly happy to say that we did complete a traffic study, which submitted in advance to this meeting, as well as we revised the site plan. And we did get a building inspection as well from the city of Troy. The building inspector had it, it's named Carla. And the building, you know, passed, made sure to talk through the ring. So, passed the inspection with the pretty much flying colors. So, at this point, I don't think we try to check off as many of the boxes as possible in the last one.
Okay, I did see the new site plan. Were there any issues that were to be remedied from inspection that occurred or from comments with emergency response?
So, one of the things that could not be completed until afterwards, but we are already in the process of it. There was a request to change the address of the building to four ninety-nine on Ninth Street. That makes it a little bit easier for transport back where emergency vehicles need to enter, which side of the buildings that you're from. And we have already begun that process, but we are not able to complete it until after the sale and the sales contingent on getting approval here. So, that will happen down the line, but just can't turn it at this stage. And from our initial discussion, it seems like that's a pretty straightforward change. Regarding thanks to Eric, who kind of got us into the right context.
Agreed. Anything else, otherwise I can open up for Commissioner Thomas. Sure. All right, so, turning over to commissioners. This proposal last meeting was one that had a little bit of confusion as it related to the special use permit. We've clarified really that is the action here, they're seeking this special use permit. And as part of that process, due to their square footage, there is a requirement for site plan review and the planning commission approval of the special use permit.
If I could just add one thing, I forgot to mention this. We did, I did go before the zoning board and they did approve a area selling variance contingent on planning, giving there. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that background. So, I know last meeting, we talked about understanding the long-term plan of the facility, but recognizing that the way the applicant intends to kind of stage their growth, the development of the site is in phases. And at first, the intent is to use the building as it is with no true modifications to the site or to the building. I think we had comments about making sure the facility was was adequate and safe as is since the inspections that were done. We have some comments here in the staff recommendations for signage, no storage being identified on the plan. Some other comments we can go through, but one of the things I was looking for in the site plan was any identification, lay down on site, material lay down or storage? Or would that all be within the existing structures?
It's a good question. At this time, certainly all the heat pumps that were manufactured will be inside. They're just not very weatherproof. There may be some like raw materials in the pipe that we manufacture, brought the demo last time. The raw materials may be stored outside. But I think probably would be probably less of that than what is even previously used when it was used for large diameter pipe bolt, so.
Could you, I mean, all of us understand where on the property that would happen?
Yeah, I don't. Can I bring up the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you guys, you guys can see this, right? So, down here, we have the main buildings right here. This is the side that the most visible from the street, you have one hundred and thirteenth street here and the ninth that over here. Then on the back of this alley is the storage building. Most of our storage will be in there, especially all of our finished products. We may store some raw material in this space right here. And there's actually already, there's already some storage racks that are used for from the previous owner. We're gonna probably just get rid of those once we purchase the building and just store some raw materials on that area there. But they'll be pretty well hidden and you know, I think not very different, largely consistent with the type of pipe storage. Where literally it's, our pipes is a little bit different than theirs, but pipe storage and opposite same implications.
All solid material, nothing liquid?
Yeah, yeah, no chemicals.
Yep.
Okay, again, we don't manufacture the pipe, we just twist it into a more usable product. Just ask maybe coatings and things like that now.
Got it. Have you seen the staff recommendations on this? I tend to agree with most of the comments. One, there was a recommendation for additional lighting within the parking lot area.
Yeah.
That'd be something you could accommodate.
So, this is, this is the existing lighting and that is the basic rendering of that kind of approximation of how far the lights shine and their effective distances. As you can see, all the lighting currently is just around, it's on the buildings, on and around the buildings. This corner back here, you know, is on a pretty hidden slope, so it's not really that practical that you know, it needs to be lit because it's kind of like a light sign. But definitely back here on this edge, I think it would be possible. And also, we did notice that there's this like this little structure here that does have electricity running to it already. So, we can add potentially a, you know, a light here that would cover at least a portion of this area as well. So, yeah, we, again, we can't really make a ton of modifications to the building, we're just leasing it, but that is a consideration that you can plan for.
I think the comment's born from a concern over just safety, security, and that's a lot. Some reports or indications crime has been initially on that lot that are in the area around it. And that concept is just a deterrent and the extension of that is really the note on fencing. I can understand where the comment and suggestion comes from, but I also recognize your property modifications or plans to prepare later.
Yeah, we are, we are planning on, you know, kind of once we move in, we'd like to upgrade the security system at least to a basic level, including, you know, today, it's not too difficult to get wireless cameras that have long-term batteries and solar panels. It just transmits through wireless. So, it's a little bit lower cost to add something like that. And we would like to upgrade a couple of them on the building itself. And then we, we've talked about putting one that either faces this, this kind of eastern slope edge or, or in some ways try to aim to capture where I think any type of potential entry could come in. It is difficult to fence this side because of the slope becomes very difficult. You're basically building a fence that barely has a heavy ditch, so it's not the most practical to do that. But, you know, we could also potentially post some signs or something like that along, along the perimeter and up on the top of the hill. So, that way, at least there's warning signs that say this area is, you know, under surveillance and is lit. And, you know, hopefully that can have stacked as a, as a deterrent, which it will, will understand.
Did you give us a sense of how long you anticipate it'll be before you move into the next phase, so, so to speak, of the project, sorry?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to say on heat pump side. That's a phase in projects that ultimately will take three years to, till its final completion. But they, the first phase of it is intended and the grant, part of the grant that we have is intended to start in the end of May. So, let's call it June, June timeframe. Twisted pipe, we'd like to start soon as possible. That product actually was made at a former factory by another company. We kind of acquire that company and are trying to keep their, I've cleaned up, but there are a lot of the customers that are looking for that product. So, that's something that we'd like to just start sooner than later.
All the time for that. Any other commissioners on, and then comments, questions?
I, I wasn't here at the last presentation, so I, what is the staged process that you're talking about? Maybe, well. Sure. How is, how is this going to, we're, we're being asked to approve special uses from the manufacturer, the product, all the other things, assembly, research, training, all of the things that you listed. But, but then I saw that there was a comment in the minutes that what was happening at the facility is just what was happening with prior tents. And that you're, or at least maybe that's the stage one.
Fairly, well, it's fairly parallel to. So, in the, the former tenant, they used to well, large tankers still pipe there. So, in terms of the the types of machinery and things like that we're looking to use, essentially what heat pump manufacturing is, is more assembly than, than any type of part. It's just bending sheet metal into a box shape and then raising, you know, copper pipes together. So, it's a very, very light, even though it's kind of an industrial process, it's a very, very light form that doesn't generate any pollution, doesn't create a lot of noise. You know, there's, there's no asbestos or chemicals or anything that, that like that. So, it's, it's generally pretty, pretty innate. Having said that, you know, the, our, what we're asking for right now is just to be able to continue to operate the building. The building had not been used for a number of years. It was previously used as a light industrial use, so we're just looking to continue that purpose and not make any major modifications to the building, simply to operate our business inside this building. And then if we, you know, want to build an addition or make some expansion to the building, then of course we fully understand, we'll come back and ask for that.
So, you mentioned that you're just leasing the space. Obviously, you don't own the property. Is it just a ground lease? Are there maintenance requirements?
Yeah, we, we have, we own all of that. And we have been cleaning up this leaves and stuff that we've done already on top of.
I don't ask largely because of the comments around the asphalt conditions and whether you have plans to restore or repaint inside the, the lot there.
Because we intend on purchasing the building within the next few months, we probably won't do that until it's kind of a gra, it's degraded to a kind of gravel-like state. But yeah, we probably will, there's a couple of spots we could equip and that needs to repair. Parts of it may, along this back edge here, this back corner, because we're not storing anything or using it in quite far away, we might need some of that little corner of gravel and just repair a section. There's a couple of damage spots around the center section where vehicles could actually drive. But, yeah, so overall, we intend to put some money in. And one piece of good news is that our grant permits us to make repairs, modifications. So, we're kind of incentivized in some ways to, to improve the overall building profile.
And is it your intent to come back before making changes like that? Are you planning to do those in tandem with larger capital investments?
I, I actually, I generally don't know if we, if we need to do just a repair around, like, a surface, a garden pit.
You wouldn't have to come back, but, you know, in transparency, if you were coming back, I think that would be something that I think would be interesting to talk about is, you know, instead of, it, it's exciting that you're not just going in there and renovating the whole thing because you don't know how much of it you need to use. And, you know, like you said, you might want to leave a section that's gravel or.
Yeah.
You know, this is a site design that we probably wouldn't be that excited about in front of us today, but it's a site that you have, so it's not really, like, I think it's a good time for us to nitpick that, you know, there's a lot of asphalt, for example.
Sure.
But yeah, you know, that's, that's interesting that you're gonna potentially repave it and maybe you don't need all of it. I think those are two good things to know about.
Yeah, I mean, there's, so on something like that, that affects the outside, we'd probably like to make a call and ask, you know, do we need to, you know, go back and stuff like that? In general, I mean, we're, we're gonna try and clean it up. I will say like what's out there right now, too. The, the former tenant bought a lot of just like garbage, metal chunks, stuff that's so we rented like a metal, like a magnet on a roller, just going around the whole thing and picking up stuff. I had a tire, a screw go through my tire like the first day I'd been there. So, you know, at a minimum, we're cleaning up the site, things like that right now. And then, you know, kind of what we're trying to work with, at least in the short term, is just to get started. It's a pretty good sized building already. We have enough to kind of kick off business and see how things progress. And, you know, if, if things progress nicely, then it would be nice to, to look into, you know, get further expansions or greater, you know, broad, broader improvement, basically.
The only other thing I wanted to add was, you know, there was some chat about security and fencing and signage. You know, I've, I've looked down at the site from the bike path before, it's my, you know, I haven't really gone down the dead end of one hundred and thirteenth street very often, but I see it, blah, 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 like that, and it's quite steep. So, it does feel like there's some security because of the grade change.
Right.
And you, you mentioned like fencing, we're looking to, I, I think if you really wanted to do fencing, you know, you would just do it at the paved area, you're right. You would just do like a perimeter, not necessarily the parcel.
On the bike path, you're saying?
No, no, on the, on the other, oh, is your site, you know, parking lot, whatever, like whatever your usable spaces. Not that I think that you need to do that, but, you know, I just, when you talk about like signage and stuff like that, you know, in my opinion, some of the times that people install, you know, high-security site, you don't, you not interior, like, it's almost more interesting to somebody like, oh, what do they, what are they even trying to keep safe in there? Is there something valuable that I should go check out? Or is it like this, this weird law that has lights is down the steep, but I don't know if it would actually be safer or more secure. I know which one feels not as nice to pass by. It's the one that says, you're being allowed to, you're gonna fit.
Speaking of signage, do you have any, I don't see anything indicated here for new signs being installed for like wayfinding or the direct deliveries?
Yeah, so there is this existing sign right here, and then there's this existing sign over on the side as well. And basically, they say the old company's name, they say Uncle Sam's piping solutions. So, right now, we're just supposed to take this down and then I think we did propose. We did submit a separate, separate, separate document. It's just a, it's just got our name on it, plain sheet metal sign, our name, instead of their name. And we'll use the exact dimensions of the signs, and that way it just fits up there in effect in the same way. So, we're not really, I don't know, or a manufacturer, we're not, you know, trying to make the thing into a bunch of, yeah, lights or something crazy like that, right?
Yeah, only issue I can think of with that is those signs, you're saying were on the west edge of the property, but all your deliveries are gonna be coming now through Ninth, right?
Ninth, right.
So, you, you, I think a sign should be added there, so.
Okay, on this side here, just.
Yeah, near, near the gate, on the gate.
Where you know that building, right? First part, I turned buildings and stuff.
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
Sure, right on the face.
Something on that side?
Yeah.
That's fine.
How many trips do you expect to, for deliveries, anytime employees today?
So, it depends, you know, so it depends on the size of the vehicle. I kind of refer to the traffic study that we, we did, but, you know, what we, what we trying to break down is the within a given year, we have a certain expectation of how many pipes we want to make and then how they, you know, go. And so, we figured out, all right, how many trucks does it take to get the raw materials in and then how many trucks does it take to get the finished parts out? So, so that's where a lot of this numbers came from. It is feasible, at least we don't know how many, for instance, one truck could take one twister pipe or it could take potentially as many as like ten or fifteen. So, we kind of are making some rough assumptions as the, most of our customers are ordering at least probably three to five at a time that are ordering one single. And if they do order one single one that you know, probably a small like residential effects type of place, you know, so. You know, we tried to, I can say definitely for our own, you know, kind of give scale, it makes a lot more sense to load one single truck out on raw materials and, you know, bring as much in as one big though. So, on the broad material side at least, we're keeping our traffic to the absolute minimum, pulling as much as we can on a single load and managing that way, just to keep our delivery to. As well as our costs.
Honestly, I know you, I see in the study that Great Manic provided, you know, they highlight newer modes that employees can use to get there.
Yeah.
Is that door on the alley side, like how, how would an employee get there? Are they gonna have to go around on tonight or could they go through the alley?
So, like personally, the way I've been driving in lately, there is a fence, it's not still a bit better shown here. So, there's this fence right here. And that has a gate that opens up. So, most, most of the time, you just open up that gate and you drive in. Say in the parking lot, there's a couple of spots along like over here. Good part back here, you really need to overflow. But at the moment, we, we don't have that many employees, so. In terms of, you know, getting there by public transport, there's no bus line that goes that close to this area. So, admittedly, that is a little bit difficult. Yeah, well, there's a bus line on Fifth Avenue, one hundred and thirteenth street, four blocks.
Yeah, it sounds similar. And just, you know, making sure, like, that sounds fine, right, for driving in. But if you only had access, if someone's walking to work, they only had access on Ninth and they live north of the site, for example.
Yeah.
And then them having to walk all the way around the site would be a deterrent for them to walk. And then we would have sent the bus then to drive.
So, we could, so most of our employees will give a key to the gates, so they will be able to enter from either side.
Okay.
If you're walking, so.
And that gate will remain closed otherwise?
Correct, correct. So, the gate basically, we don't even leave it open during the day. Truck comes and usually the calls or something and it opens up, but you know, otherwise the gate is, the front gate has to be open just for people coming in from that way.
And then if an employee is riding bike, where would they store that bike?
There is a little spot right in the entranceway. We haven't like necessarily put a sign or anything to label it, but there is a spot right now where we, we're keeping like kind of other, you know, that roller, the magnetic roller. So, like things like that are being stored in there. We also do have a fair amount of space that's kind of unallocated, still in the warehouse. So, yeah, I think certainly there could be, there could be a couple of different spots. We haven't had need to label them yet because we still don't have a ton of employees. But as we get there, then we, you know, we can allocate some space, but obviously it'd be better to have indoor. The other option actually is, is about right here is a covered patio or cover the cement slab is, is great. We, we don't really have immediate use for that, so that could be just a good place to park things as well.
But for now, there's plenty of space indoors. So, you could, you essentially guarantee an employee, if they wrote the right.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments? Not sure, do we formally open and close public comment or do we do this? All right, so a lot of people here today, I guess I'll, I'll turn it over and open it for public comment. Has anybody come today to offer any comment or feedback on this proposal? If you have, please come on up to the podium. Or if you joined by Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, and Eric will let me know. Not seeing anybody in person, anybody on Zoom? Okay, then I will make motion that we formally close public comment on proposal.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I, I.
Okay, so, related to special use permit, I think personally, I feel we could condition any kind of modifications from those would be adding signage, the light and security cameras. Those are the two things that stand out to me for anything necessary to move forward here. Anything else commissioners who want to see or have any other issues with? The address change, I think you were saying was something you, you.
It's in the process of, I'm happy to make it a condition if you'd like. I just understand that we have to buy the building and close on it. So, it needs a couple of months just to for us to get to that stage before we can do it, but I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so we could add that also as a condition. The one kind of standout open-ended item for me is the asphalt condition and repaving of the site. I understand what you're saying, but it might make sense in the larger concept for what happens on the property to forego that. But at the same time, you know, if they chose to, once they own the property, go ahead and repave it, then we're pretty much gonna be stuck with a brand new asphalt lot for, for however long.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think a lot of these things personally, it, it sounds like you are looking to do things that, that you're. Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, I think a lot of these things personally, it it sounds like you are looking to do things that that your use of the site. And I expect that, so it doesn't sound like you're dying, your itching to pay things over, so I think, you know, certainly not.
I I guess I'm not entirely sure how that counts, but you prefer that we pay it or not?
No, we'd prefer less, less. I won't speak for the entire, entire board, but I think um in general, we want to see a bus service throughout the city.
Gotcha.
Um, where wherever it makes sense, you know, if you were gonna be taking deliveries twenty times a day, of course, we want to see it paved, but in this case, I think you could get away with a lot less pavement. Anyway, my point is that I think applicants, you know, working to do what's in the best interest of their business. And I don't think we need to stipulate, they come back and, you know, the timing works out, I'm happy to review that, but otherwise.
Everybody else good with that? Right, um, if there's no other issues, um, I think the motion would be to approve this uh special use permit. We did already declare the application plea at last month's meeting, so all there is left to do is a motion on approval. With a condition that uh security cameras be installed, I I don't know if we want to quantify them, but. Think we leave that to the applicant, security cameras be installed, um, the signage be placed. Come through the notes here. Lighting in the parking lot, and then I think technically the site plan should identify a snow storage area. It, I I'm guessing you're gonna look at the area closest to the hill where the.
Yeah.
Parade rises for where you plow towards.
Yeah.
Um, so just identifying that on the plans.
Okay.
Um, so o- other conditions, otherwise, uh, can I get a motion to that end? Could you say so moved? Sure, I I make a motion that we approve the special use permit with the condition that uh signage be identified on the buildings. Snow storage be identified within the parking lot, um, the expectation is that it'll be close to the northeast corner of the property. Um, that lighting be added in the parking lot, um, no fewer than one light post would be added. Um, and I think that's a, and the address, thank you. Would the address uh be corrected for uh the emergency response? Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay. Our next agenda item is PLTC twenty twenty four zero 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 nine for eighteen nineteen Fifth Avenue. This is a subdivision.
Good evening.
Good evening, Michael Ginsberg and Lindsay Carr of Patterson San Antonio Griffiths for the app.
I understand that there was a bit of a hiccup with the submission and that perhaps the commission is not accepting it as what we submitted tonight. Um, we do think that most of it is in at this point, and that was a question about whether or not the long form was required or not. Uh, that was addressed, I think, last Friday, uh, and has been fully submitted at this point. Uh, we also acknowledge that the commission would like to see uh a easement. For emergency egress out of uh what's being delineated as uh lot two. Uh, into the driveway area so that uh in case of some emergency that. Uh occupants of lot two would have a second means uh. Dedicated and uh legally acknowledged egress.
Good thing, um, just in general, could you give us some background on purpose for the subdivision, what's the, what's the intention?
Sure, um, for as long as I can remember, the property was previously offices on lot two. Of um Ryan and O'Hare, which was an insurance agency, uh, it's still being occupied by an insurance agency. Uh, and what we're proposing as lot one, uh, is a residence. So the owner would like to separate the two, um, and have the option in the future. Of potentially selling lot two to the current owner.
Okay, um, are both, uh, if I'm recalling correctly, these buildings or at least one of them is on the historic register, is that correct? Or is a landmark?
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
There's a plaque nearby that I'm just not sure if that refers to these two structures.
I'm not positive if it is or not, um, there's nothing particularly special about uh these. This one building at this point, um, and there is no intended change in the use. All we're asking for really is uh a new division line and a new address.
Understood, uh, we also then have to consider what could be done with the property. Now that there are two independent lots, two, two different buildable lots, um, and so just factors and.
There is no intention to change any of the buildings, uh, any of the location, there isn't going to be any environmental disturbance. Uh, no change in water or sewer usage, like I said, we're really just facing. Or stealing too.
Um, open it up, commissioners, any questions?
One of the criteria that we are supposed to consider in evaluating this application is, is.
Oh, you pull your mic.
There we go, can you hear me? Well, among the reasons that that that, whether the subdivision um protects the existing character of the property. And I I'm just looking at this, it looks like the, to me, I mean, you just look at one parcel and it's, there's the carriage house. That belonged to this beautiful mansion at one point in time, running a property line through the middle of the driveway. Just, why don't you tell me how that that preserves the existing character of the property?
I don't believe it changes the existing character at all. Or there will be no changes.
Well, suppose that new owner decides they don't need a driveway there, cause they're gonna come in from the alley, they put a fence up. Suppose they decide they want to use that for something else, this could drastically change the nature of the problem, of the property being entirely.
Well, I I don't believe so, because the driveway is going to belong to lot one.
The driveway has a line that goes right through it on the map.
Um, it's not, it's not right through the middle of the driveway, that's the um, that's the edge of what will be lot two. And there are um porches and other items which are identified. I see it, I can't move it now. Put right on the line, there are, right where, right where he is, you know, that where the line is to the right of that. On the picture is already existing structure, no- nothing in there is changing, so so the, the property line is going to be the end of the building. Well, uh, it need, it needs to be where it's identified on the survey. So as to allow for egress from lot two in case of an emergency out of that side door.
So, so it needs to be in the middle of the driveway, maybe not in the middle, but in the driveway to provide that egress, doesn't that? That's what, that's what's depicted.
You need to separate the property somewhere.
How does that, I go, that's, why don't you address how this protects the existing character of the property?
Because nothing changes.
So this is exactly what I was talking about, the action itself, while simply a idea on paper, you know, imaginary line on the parcel. Does not physically constitute a change to anything on the site, allows for potential changes. And so when we're reviewing subdivisions, that's the exact sort of consideration we're supposed to think through. What could happen, what might somebody do now that the properties are separated in this manner?
Let me, let me address that then, depending for clarifying it, the property owner can do all of that now, so it doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
Probably only wants to put up a fence and property, he can certainly do it.
Well, I mean, within. And.
They would come to us, there would be a site plan review and.
And you could cer- certainly see how that would be less likely to happen today than it would if there were two separate parcels there. I mean, you know, in thirty years, if both of these landowners are gone and things go south, I mean, you've just given them a right to make like the funkiest property. Troy battle, yeah, I mean, I spend more time looking at parcel lines in the city than any sane person should. And uh, this would be one of the weirdest ones, especially in the downtown area, I mean, this might be one of the oddest, you know, property lines. It's about the two, two neighbors, yeah, I I don't have an issue with it, like, in theory, right, to separate these two properties. But the placement of the line is very strange to me, like if it were potentially following, you know, the built structure. Uh, more closely, I think that would make a lot more sense, it would, you know, what is, why is it drawn, you know, especially, I guess it would be the west. The western edge on a diagonal, why is it drawn like that, they're saying?
Um, we relied on the surveyors to provide, to provide this as to what they thought was the best um division line. I can certainly follow up with them, but it, it really doesn't matter to the applicant if you would prefer that the division line match. Um, the property line, the, the property um configuration of lot two.
I'm not saying it should, I I think it should match physical characteristics of the property so that landowners would have. A more reasonable understanding of where their property begins to end without having to zoom in on a survey and guess where that line is. I mean, this is, you have to pay a surveyor a thousand bucks each time you want to argue about it, I mean, that's.
Or we file a survey with the county clerk.
Well, are you gonna have, are you gonna have seven markers out there, like, you know, that's, of course, you can, you'll have the survey file with the county clerk, that goes without saying. But to actually know where the line is when you're physically looking at it, right, it just, it's, it's a very strange.
The commission's point, and would you prefer that we modify the line so that it um followed the configuration of the, of lot one? We can certainly do.
I, I would prefer that the line represents physical characteristics of the site. I, you know, and I have peered in, in from the gates, um, like peasant, uh, several times. And I, you know, I don't know actually what it looks like down there, uh, and not, it's not for my curiosity, but you know, I think that should, like. Whatever is happening on the west side, I see the AC units, I see, you know, the staircase, um, those are the things that are the physical characteristics that I'm referring to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, of course. If you're interested in either insurance or a financial advisor, I can get you in the building.
Use some insurance, I'm sure, maybe, maybe my planning machine dollars.
And let, let me also just read this last comment, I hope that was finished, but um, uh, if. Uh, approval is necessary for anything that a future landlord might contemplate on the site, then they've got to come back to the commission.
I have a question, who parks in the garage?
Um, whose portion is that?
No, I don't, no, I, no. It feels like the driveway belongs to. The home, the building on fifth. It doesn't, it doesn't feel like as a passerby that that driveway belongs to. A little carriage house, it's a beautiful carriage house, it just seems illogical to me. And so I would think that if you want a subdivision, put it at, right at lot one. And creating easements so that I can drive my car to lot one across lot two's beautiful driveway that looks like a courtyard.
That would also match the physical characters.
When you say lot one, in your case, then you mean. The perimeter of the structure.
Correct.
Yeah, which is, isn't, you know, rotating in ninety degrees, but it's also matching the physical characteristics of the site. If I, if I had the money to buy this, I would also have the money to dig up the driveway and put a bunch of plants, and then we'd be arguing all day about where the line is, they can draw in line with the soil, I mean, it'd be a mess.
I, I also wonder what kind of precedent this sets, if, if everybody in Troy of the carriage house starts outlining their carriage house. If that's a big portion of their parcel sold separately, it's just worth considering.
I mean, oh, I don't want to go on too much of the tangent, but I have, I have no problem with, you know, with, with small lots and I encourage the use of carriage houses. But yeah, it's different, that's a lot different, this is a lot different scenario than Sarah, it's, it's driving, I, I find that to be much more practical.
There, there are many odd shaped parcels in the city of Troy.
Yeah.
Um, and I. I personally.
Too many, maybe, what am I saying?
Nothing you can do about that, um, I, I don't, I don't think that this really changes the character or anything at the property. And, you know, we shouldn't be dictating to the property owner how they should uh allow parking. On the property, right, parking, they don't need a parking variance.
No, nobody has mentioned anything about allowing or not allowing parking.
Well, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
And as you consider whether it changes character, it's not necessarily need to be a changed character, you also need to consider whether it poses a potential for future change.
And, and as I mentioned, any um change that requires approval, the, the owner would have to come back. And it's still controlled by the commission.
Sure, my, my, uh, not that radical example of tearing up.
Can I chew up that beautiful driveway and, and put down sloppy asphalt that has bumps and bleeds?
You know, that would be fire, but I, and I, I, you know, I don't have a, a theoretical objection or existential objection to. Uh, uh subdivision between these two properties, I just, the one that's being proposed is a, is a pet scratcher. And I think should be reconsidered.
I don't think that we can. I, I, I want to address the fact that this is one of the most beautiful homes in this city. We all know it, and fair or not, for me to say this. The occupant of this building has come to the planning commission in the past. In defense of preserving the, the, the character and not dissolving such properties. In this city and critiquing the personalization, which is not a word. Micro parcelization. I'm, I'm alluding to a potential project across the street, so I, I. I think that this application should align with those same goals.
While it is ironic and I find that interesting, I obviously uh would not consider that in our decision.
Fair enough, and let, let me, just before I leave, I know that you've got other matters on the agenda to address. Um, the part, the only way to get back to the carriage house with a vehicle is over the parking lot. So that's why it makes sense to have the parking lot part of that parcel as opposed to it being a part of uh lot two. And then having to give permission through easement or whatever it may be, uh, lease for access to the back parcel.
So how will lot, how will the owner of lot two maintain their building if they don't own that driveway?
They still have access to the building, like they enter the building for the time, you can have a structural.
But what if something, they have to do masonry repairs on the porch? And, and the mason needs to bring a lift in and there's no easement for that activity.
Permission from them, I mean, every, every property in the city has that issue. I, when the neighbor of our office building wants to work on their property. And they need access to our property in order to put up scaffolding or, you know, lay down the materials or to get the materials in there. Um, you know, we're not giving them an easement, they say, hey, can we, you know, our, uh, our, uh, construction guys are going to be here on such a site. They, you know, can we use this? And of course, we're good neighbors, you know.
And that's, and that owner of the carriage house may say, no, you can't.
Yeah, but that could happen in any parcel in the city.
Uh, uh, you know, it sounds like there's going to be easements any which way of slight. Uh, uh, you know, it sounds like there's going to be easements any which way you're slicing.
Yeah.
I just think, like I said earlier, I'd like to move on. The line should just reflect those physical characters of the site.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'm just saying, when I look at this, I, I said to myself, I don't understand why you just don't draw a. A line, you know, in front of the carriage house and call that the property and then have an easement for the driveway. It seems like you're over complicating it.
Well, um, let's, let's say that um the property owner.
Make sure you use the mic, please.
Um, let's say that hypothetically, the property owner sells lot two. And keeps lot one, which is the carriage house um as a residence for themselves. They don't want to have to get permission from the owner of lot two to access their property.
But isn't an easement something, uh, uh, a thing that's in the record that is there? It doesn't dissolve when the property is sold, does it?
No, and easement runs with the land, if done properly. But um it it's still, that doesn't change the ownership issue. And the only way that you can get back to the carriage house with a vehicle is through that parking lot. And therefore, why would you um just as a matter of course relinquish that right? And then, and then um try to obtain it back through an easement? It legally, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do it that way. I still don't get it. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's me, it's, it sounds very similar to the situation that's being posed now. Anyway, I, again, I'm sorry, I like, I, unless they're, they're.
So um, let, let me ask what the commission would like to see. Uh, moving forward, other than changing the uh the line demarcation there to match the outline of the footprint of. Lot two, so that when we come back a month from now, we can have everything in order and move toward, you know, a decision.
A line. Corrected line, the easement language needs to go to Corporation, uh, yes, Corporation Councils. Um, those for action items. And the long forms, the A F.
It's historically given way and so all, it's just something that they would.
We can ask for their.
And plus, otherwise they have their role.
I don't think they have to be, because there's no modifications to our structures, so. Now I recall when the commission first discussed this, that there was concern about um. Separation between the buildings in the back. Yeah, focused on the easement and around the lot line division, but there was, there was some question as to. Uh, whether the stairs were completely around one line or another, or whether the buildings were separated. This is our first time reviewing it normally, but.
It was a staff meeting.
It is in staff meeting and notes. Um, there was some additional discussion in the book, and there are staff notes about the rear staircase on the building and. How that works operationally.
That staircase is wholly within uh proposed lot one. There would be no access to it from lot two. And so it is completely separated.
No physical access or no legal access?
No physical access.
Physical access.
And the uh, the. The common wall between lot one and lot two is brick, and I believe that it's already fire rated, although I expect that code will be on a table.
Great. Um, I don't think we have any other concerns, you know.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Oh, um, yeah, I'd be willing to on this action. It's type one, so we first have to declare lead agency and start the thirty day block. Sometimes I'm actually do that. Look.
No more.
Okay, uh, seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, uh, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is T L T C twenty twenty four zero zero one zero. Forty three, thirty two, forty two second street. This is the Troy savings thing.
Thank you, sir. Um, I should, I'll disclose, Dash and I were coworkers uh here at the City of Troy in the planning department and. Um, have a good relationship. Uh. Uh, Rick, do you have a recommendation on whether or not I should recuse myself or not? I do not think that Dash's involvement in this project will prohibit me from acting technically.
Are you saying should you be recused because you're friends with Dash?
Yeah.
I don't think that, I don't think that's a disqualifying.
Okay, well, I always.
It may, it may be in other circumstances.
I always like to disclose any potential conflicts. And, and even.
Welcome back, Dash. The two of you have worked on this project, right?
Correct.
And you have no financial interest in it whatsoever?
That's correct.
You don't even have a bank account? Well, they don't have bank.
I don't even have a bank account.
Hey, Dash, let's, let's hear what you got.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for, for having us, giving us the time tonight. Nice to see some familiar faces as well as some new ones. Uh, thank you, Eric, for all your help. Yeah, got used to the staff comments. We, I won't say plainly that we need to be with all of them. And are in the process of updating a lot of our materials today. Uh, my name is Dash Christner, architectural designer at Architecture Plus. I'm joined by my colleague Pete Beal, as well as Lisa McCorkle, our landscape architect. And all together, we proudly represent Leslie Chu and John Albom at the Troy Music Hall Corporation. Uh, the building itself needs no explanation in its significance, cultural importance, et cetera. Uh, this is the Troy Music Hall Expansion Project. The interior work includes turning the bank hall that was just mentioned into a lively event space for conferences, weddings, and other music events of the like. Uh, the other interior scope item is bringing cooling into the hall space to allow for expanding programming through the hot summer months. The three critical site scope items that are on the table tonight include the parking lot, the courtyard on Second Street, as well as. Uh, exposed duct tape on the annex roof on Franklin Alley that is associated with that HVAC work. So I can get into the details of of all three of those components, uh, but before I do, are there any? Questions right out of the gate on those three site scope items?
I'm ready. I just want to clarify one thing. You, you have been out of city employed for more than a year, correct?
Correct, two years now.
Alright, thank you.
Out of here.
If you want us to be sure.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Did you want to put a presentation?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll go through the agenda center here and go to our high building. Thanks, Aaron.
It'd be good for everybody looking on. While he's pulling that up, I'll just kind of go over procedure on this one. Again, type one action, so uh things we will have to do are. Are declare the application complete, declare ourselves lead agent, um, wait for the period to end on, other interested or involved agencies to respond. Um, and then uh we would have a determination on seeker to render and then site plan.
So I'll start with the parking lot upgrades of the existing parking lot. Uh, certainly need some TLC at the moment. Uh, there are twenty seven existing spaces. The proposed layout uh will allow for thirty spaces. That includes two handicap spaces, two box truck spaces. As well as eight uh spaces for bike parking. So those eight spaces should be enough for Commissioner Ranspike collections. Just enough. Um, so as I mentioned, that, that plan is, is in progress. Uh, Lisa McCorkle at LA Group and ourselves are working together to bring in more details, more um. More information about really what's, what's going into that plan per uh Eric's staff comments, such as information on the fencing, ballards, um. And other, other critical parking elements. The courtyard component also under development that will involve repurposing as much of the Belgian blocks. And the, the pavers that are there now. They look nice, but they're certainly a tripping hazard at the moment, and we do want to. Create more of a seamless transition from the Second Street sidewalk into the courtyard for uh easier access for folks in wheelchairs, as well as a wider space for summer programming outside. Um, which the, the Music Hall does now. So we just want to make that experience for the Music Hall much, much nicer. Uh, there will be exterior signage, again, under development. We're going to conform completely to the zoning regulations for, for signage, exterior signage. Um, there is a marquee ad alternate in the project. Uh, that's certainly probably the most conceptual component of our application that you all saw. Um, we referenced historical photographs and postcards of the previous marquee. I'll tell you, we will not be bringing it back completely in kind because that marquee extended eighteen feet from the building, which would just simply. Be a hazard for vehicles cutting through Second Street. Um, so if anything, we will create a uh simple contemporary design that echoes the modules and, and. Um, design elements of that historical marquee. Um, again, under development, and that has been, uh, that has received some commentary from the Historic Review Commission last Tuesday, March twelfth. Um, some of the Historic Review Commission's comments also included uh painting the ductwork on Franklin Alley, uh, a tone and color that matches the masonry. While the cooling tower and air handling unit on the roof of the annex being enclosed in architectural metal, not to mimic the color of masonry. But to just be a gray tone or something that, that diffuses into the skies as a passerby would, would go by. Um, that pretty much sums up the uh most of the site scope items, those three site scope items. I will also say on the location of the exterior exposed uh HVAC equipment on the annex roof. It seems to raise a red flag that there's, you know, metal ducting on top of such a historical building. But this is the best and most ideal location for this equipment to not threaten the acoustic sensitivity of the space. Um, moving any of this equipment, cooling tower or air handling unit into the building would cause significant vibration. And therefore threaten the acoustic nature of the space. So this is the uh, the best space for it, and we are working with our M E P engineers, quantum engineering. To reduce, reduce, reduce the sizing of all of those uh ducting items as much as possible. So that about sums up the comments I had. I welcome Commissioner Collins.
Knowing that that last bit is probably one of the most sensitive.
Of course.
Points, um.
Absolutely.
Can you talk about considerations you guys had about screening or not screening that and what your thoughts were there?
Sure. Uh, so we've, we, we started with the exposed ductwork at its much, it's earlier and much larger size, reducing and reducing with our M E P engineers to, to the most. Logical, realistic size of those mechanical units and the ducting. Then we earlier proposed a uh, a mock masonry screen on Second Street to mimic the facade of the. Um, the annex building, the uppermost portion of the annex, uh, not the lower uh sixties era annex. Uh, and then Historic Review Commission actually said, nope, don't, don't mimic the masonry. Don't make it look like the building beneath it. Just cover it in a delicate. Um, substantial gray architectural metal, so it kind of disguises itself into the sky. Um, so that's, that's where we're at at the moment. It, it will be visible from Second Street and Franklin Alley. But we are making it as small as realistically possible and as, as appropriately disguised as humanly possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tom, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a quick question.
Sure.
There, uh, I wanted to ask you, and I, I've been in the music hall, and it does need like care, I guess.
Yeah.
The question I had was. This is very historic. I think everyone's familiar of the incredible acoustics associated with this building. Um. Has a, has a vibrational analysis been performed? To ensure that. Operational equipment. That no, nothing is inadvertently transmitted through the structure into the uh music floors.
Yes, the answer is absolutely yes. We're working very closely with Brushhole Acoustics, acoustic engineering company out of Chicago. Uh, to assist with those vibration testings and whatnot. They've visited the Music Hall already, performed some tests early on, and then will continue to perform tests throughout the construction. Uh, the location of all the equipment in the basement to the annex roof is, is app, is very delicately selected and, and. Moving around in every way possible to, to minimize vibration. Yeah, so we are working with professionals to, to test that.
They basically modeled that, recognizing a lot of the turtles that we use very, very brutal. And, and do transmit the slightest vibration to the management, you know.
Yep, absolutely. So uh in the basement, there will be um pong acoustic ceilings above every room where the equipment or the. Equipment making the noise is, so that in, in each of those spaces, the first layer of defenses that's seen right above. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So exciting project, definitely always good to see, you know, reinvestment in some of the city's gems like this. Um, that parking lot is one. I walk by all the time on the weekends and wonder why we're not doing something better in that space or rehaving it uh in some way. Um, back to the application. So I guess maybe we, we talked through the um proposal through each of the three components, unless you guys just. Have general comments, but uh let's start, um, I'd suggest with, with the parking lot space. Um, again, I agree that staff report comments are excellent and things I'd like to see for the next appearance, including the landscaping plan, lighting plan. Um, if there's dumpsters planned to be uh located within that lot. Uh, let's see what else are in lot measurements. Just some of the details represented here in the staff recommendations. I think those are easy, low hanging fruit. Anything else specifically? How about materials? I think one thing absent from this would be a little bit more visual of what you're planning to do there. Uh, whether it's some ice metric, you know, renderings or even just material selections, some palettes, something for. For the planters um that are suggested for the lot. Yeah, thank you.
I'm scrolling through that page. Thank you.
Okay, um, does it call out what the plantings are proposed?
Not at this time, I know, but we have referenced the twenty sixteen, I believe, edition of Troy Street Trees. Are there any recommendations beyond that list or anything more current?
I'll leave it to the tree expert.
I'm not, I'm not an expert. I'm not an expert. Um, I mean, I, I, no, and when you pick them out, I'll tell you which one.
Sounds good.
I would just, you know, I've read a lot about leaving adequate space in tree boxes. Um, I'd like to see whatever goes here last and, and, you know.
Yeah.
Be something that generations can kind of enjoy. Um, and I find that a lot of times our sidewalks just don't properly accommodate the, the space for that, so just. Things to think about. You're obviously limited with what you can do spatially, but.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think, um, you know, you made a comment earlier about you, the, um. What are we doing? Who would be walking by this site thinking, what are we doing sideways or something that are happening here? And um, yeah, to take a, a big step back, I mean. It's, you know, I, I would say it's really inappropriate uh. To have this on the, on the corner in general, and, and now that we are looking at it, um. I would look for ways to soften the impact of having a service lot on the corner in downtown Troy. I think it would be the biggest thing. Um, you know, and I, I think the. Existing configuration has been um. Always a weird thing to, to exist. You know, people are, are obviously always complaining about parking and seeing the weird drivelines from, what was that, old bank ATM or something like that?
Yeah, the, the drive thru, yeah.
Yeah, um, so glad to see that go away and make better use of the site, but I would say. Using that. To increase number of spaces and not do something more creative and not do something that serves. The people in the community, the people who are walking through the Music Hall. Um, not every, you know, most of the people who are going to shows there are not parking in the slot. They're managing in every other way, and that works out very well for the vast majority of the patrons. Um, you know, you mentioned the, the bike rack and uh I'm, I'm glad to see that, you know, bike parking is being uh. Um, you know, you mentioned the, the bike rack and uh, I'm, I'm glad to see that, you know, bike parking is being uh thought of. I, I don't think it needs to be in the parking lot, especially I don't think it ought to be in the back corner of the lot where it would feel like the least safe place to stick it. I would just recommend putting some, uh, installing some uh racks on the sidewalk closer to the entrances of the building. Um, where again, like more people could utilize them on their own shows. I think that is a, you know, we, I admire the um, the impact that the music hall straps have uh three hundred and sixty days in here in Detroit. I think it's a wonderful institution, I, but I think uh the parking lot is, is specifically something that only serves the music hall when there's something happening uh happening to call it a show. And that, that's a uh, a short sighted use of that space. Um, so specifically not increasing the number of spaces, but using that space in a more creative way, um, particularly on the corner of Second Street, uh, that northwest corner would be ideal.
If, if I may add to that, I, I should have mentioned that the client actually recently asked the power be brought to the parking lot so that additional outdoor summer programming can occur in that lot while vehicles are not present. So that, that is one way that we are activating this lot.
That's great. And I think I, I would hope to see when you come back, um, I would hope to see an updated parking configuration. Uh, again, specifically with the, that northeast corner softened and purified, um, adding some placemaking elements to the site. And that will impact your planting plan, I'm sure. So I think that would be a more appropriate time to talk about uh trees. Um, yeah, I think there's something really special you could do there in that, in that corner uh while maintaining, you know, accessible ADA parking spaces while having bike parking, but I think that right there.
I think you're getting the nail on the head. And to clarify, when you said northeast.
You know, sorry, north.
It's northwest of the lot, southeast of the intersection. Um, so I think that the elephant in the room is how often that lot's vacant. Um, and really it's most noticeable as it relates to use of the Monument Square area of Farmers Market when it's outdoors. Um, you're constantly seeing this corner as a drop off location for people. Um, there are, there is a bench right there. I'd love to see some, something shown on the site plan for uh seating area to, to kind of better facilitate use of that. I know when my mom comes, it's nice to be able to have her sit while I go find parking or drop her off there and come back. Um, yeah, I think the bike rack location to me, I'm a little confused why the two uh ADA spaces are on where they're located. I would expect them to be kind of on closer edge to the, to the, um, actually, sorry, my foot, footbump.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, that is the closest. Sorry, uh, looking at that, so. Um, so I was wondering maybe if the bike stall space should be up in the closer corner to Stage Street. That would kind of move it away from the dark back corner of it, but just an idea. Um.
I, I think just put him on the second, on the sidewalk, you know, obviously leaving plenty of space for fresh green. Yeah, fresh greens to walk, but um, or even, you know, on state, I know there's like the, the rear entrance series, like series or something like that. So yeah, you can spread an eye, you can maybe blend into the city and look like a normal city where there are normal bike rides. Great.
Um. What was the programming you guys anticipate using the lot for potentially?
The programming for the lot?
Yeah, you mentioned bringing power to it so you could have more use of it.
Uh, I, I believe it's just outdoor concert series, uh, perhaps um different events with student groups that are coming into the, the interior of this project, the recording studio space as well as classroom spaces. Um, perhaps some of that teaching could be done outdoors on the lot. Um, that's, that's certainly a question for our, our owner. It's necessary, but that, those are the uses that I am playing with for that parking lot space.
So I hear you, those proposals, which are quite exciting. I hear the Thruster James comments. And I, I, the question I have to you is how important is this parking at all to the, to the success of your proposal? Couldn't this be better used as public space in the, in the uh best part of the downtown to facilitate outdoor events, to facilitate uh enjoying the space during the summer when you're going to a concert in the newly air conditioned mall? All of those things seem so much better than a, an asphalt um parking. How important is it really? Something that goes to the core? It's just, it's just a thought. And it only came to me kind of.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes, your comments.
I was trying to dial myself back a couple of clicks, but I appreciate you getting to work.
Well, I, I don't have that luxury. I'm in a stage like where I just got to go for it. Or I don't need to go. And so.
No, I, I agree with you both.
I, I think this, if you just look at the picture and, and where it was located next to the bank and it's just, it could be phenomenal.
And it could be something that serves, you know, you mentioned public space, which is, you know, would be really admirable, but it could be something that um, obviously serves the music hall primarily. And it could also be something that is more uh thoughtful of the future, you know, if there was ever plans to build something there um or use the space in that way, I think, you know, and any, anything other than a, a service lot on this corner, I think would be uh much better for.
And I think it's really just because of how often it's not used.
Yeah.
Like if it was constantly in use and lessening the burden of parking or congestion elsewhere in the city, maybe there's would have a different opinion towards it, but.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we have so many service lots in City Troy that are very poorly utilized. Uh, and yeah, I, we, I, we talk all day.
Okay, yeah.
But yeah.
Perhaps we'll move on to the next.
That's not, that's not necessarily the.
Got it.
Um.
Anything else on that?
Just in this, to give you more substantive uh comments about trees, I would say large uh trees that will grow into being large church shade trees, sideways straight shade trees would be uh preferred. Um, yeah, obviously the more native species. And I know the music hall also just planted a bunch of, or there were a bunch of young trees that were planted all along the music hall. And so diversifying those plantings, you know, to try and counter, I don't know exactly what was planted there. Um, but trying to diversify that as much as possible. Thank you.
Warren, Suzanne, anything on the parking?
Oh, I just had a question. If we do, you know, this plan goes through, did anyone look into paving that's pervious?
It's a great question. Did you guys consider if you're resurfacing a lot using a pervious pavement?
Um, don't know the answer to that question immediately, but, but it's something we can discuss.
There's probably more symbols.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so the next component of the project is the um entrance, really, and then uh annex space. Comments there, I think the, I think the suggestion changes make, make it sense to me. I don't have a lot personally to offer on this one.
The, the, when we're talking about the annex, but that's a smaller building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right where the lobby is and entrance and new signage will be installed.
Right. So we'll, we'll be modifying the main entrance. We'll be keeping that door on the, the northern side, that single door, but adding a double door right in the center um, to welcome folks into their way into the music hall and that space in the bank vault.
Um, thoughts on tree or no tree in the landscaping space?
The existing tree?
I don't know. Are you guys planning to keep that there?
Um.
It's right in front of where that um vent is and.
Right, we, there, there is a note on, I believe, one of the other uh diagrams here that we will be closing or disguising that louver, that exposed louver, that vent with uh.
Yeah, the planting, the planter box that's shown seems like it would right overlap where that tree is, so I doubt it would stay there. Um, right.
I, I personally think that's a very nice tree. Japanese maple, which is quite a trigger. I would suggest not killing it, but I also would be open to seeing what else planned.
Yep, this, this, this plan is, is uh getting more and more resolution by the day. So we'll, we'll assess the longevity and health of each tree and move from there to be, be sensitive to it.
And then can you use a, okay, I see the second street on the left, so again, the door.
This would be another plan where it'd be nice to see between this and the, the sheet above this one. Um, material selections. I know it's probably working towards that, so.
Yeah.
Just including some sheets in the next mission to give us better sense of materials.
Are you planning a four dimensional render?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're going to build a three D render. Um, yeah, to show the materiality and, and the substance of, of that space and, and clarify a lot of these comments, questions from H R C as, as well as yourselves.
Um, what about lighting in this space? There were a couple uh sconce type features being added, right?
Yep, so we're, we're proposing a uh pretty modest, very simple sconce there. The um, the up down, that black cylinder, something similar to that. We'll, we'll certainly provide data sheets, spec sheets, nail down exactly which product. Um, but yes, we believe that would flank the um, that entry, that new entry.
And programmatically, do you guys expect this area out front, outside of the doors to be like a gathering space pre-show?
Yes.
Um, so I'd even wonder maybe if lights, uh, don't know, is the, is that still savings? Yeah, on the north edge of this courtyard space, that's still savings bank structure, right?
Uh, that's the, I believe, the East Stuart Jones Building. So the music hall is to the south of what we're looking at. So page right.
So if you go to the one with like the tiled, um, it looks like stained glass hand drawing of the courtyard space. Keep scrolling up a little bit. Yep, that, that sheet just, see there, the arrow? No, no, go, keep back down. Then right to that one. See at the top side of the sheet, it actually says right there, Troy Savings Bank Music Hall Courtyard Study. Unless that's just the sheet label.
That's the label.
Sorry.
Yep, all good. Yeah, that's the East Stuart Jones.
I'm wondering if maybe you'd want some just sort of mood lighting for that courtyard space off the face of the building. Um, if, if that's going to be there in the evenings.
Yeah.
Um, just some.
Or it could be bollard lighting or.
Yeah, bollard lighting, something like that.
Yeah, per, personally, I think that, that north side does have a lot of potential to kind of be the, the placemaking area. Again, thinking about how that can play a role in the streetscape, uh, that, that fabric of the community when there's not an event going on. Uh, I think that's another opportunity here.
There, either Commissioner or applicant thoughts on including any seating in that area or not?
As, as the, we, we haven't considered that. Uh, we expect there would be, obviously limited.
Yeah, limited or with reduced seating here. Uh, but like the parking lot, we consider as a bench opportunities. I think that would be great.
Good. No suggestions. Um, anything else goes for the entrance? The, the area also, uh, they propose to remove reflective glazing or, or coatings off of the windows. H R C seemed to.
Yep, support that.
They, the H R C also recommended that the molian finish um be consistent and match. Up on the second floor, it's um, I believe, just bare aluminum. And then down below, it's more of a dark bronze. So we would provide some uniformity there.
Um, is that what's labeled as a side entrance existing or proposed? Is that a new entrance?
Uh, that, that's exist, that's currently how, how citizens would go up and purchase tickets and access the offices of the music hall.
Yeah. Molian is.
For uh. That is strange. I, I thought you had that change.
Yeah, probably. The, this.
Yes. Yeah, that, that. So the, this is the storefront pieces, centralized pieces.
I only wish I didn't import things.
Any other comments? Otherwise we can go on to the HVAC portion of the project.
Uh, marquee, or anyone do that?
Either, I guess we're still in the same areas to go, marquee next.
I've been taking a lot of space.
Glad you're not going to have a marquee standing on the street. That looked, the, the postcard or whatever you included looked pretty.
Go big or go home.
Yeah, if you go all the way to the. Peach twenty one. The original, I don't know, it's a drawing, a photo, keep going. This.
Yeah, the postcard.
Yeah, this can, almost confuses me to look at. There's stairs going up to the doors. So it's like the street elevation was six feet lower.
Right, right.
Uh, the marquee seems to cut off the mid height of the door into the building. I, I was trying to understand that. So, or whatever this was.
And, and you, Roddy, you touched on another comment from the Historic Review Commission where the marquee was a part of a pair with the stairs. So if you bring back the marquee, you're, you're kind of part of the package deal to bring back the stairs too, which we're not doing. So. Yeah, so, so eighteen feet out from the building, since the road width has increased over the years, it's just not practical. So, yeah, we, we would utilize the existing medallions that are still on the facade. They're quite ornate, quite beautiful. Um, but we would again conform to the current zone code.
Um, speaking of the, are you guys touching curb or moving curbs?
Not, not in this area.
And I'm in the, uh, parking lot, perhaps a little bit, or utilizing existing curb cuts.
Um, but in some, in some areas, yes, there might be some improvements to the, the curb cuts.
Um, specifically on that same corner, and starting to go back to the, the lot, um, but in that, I guess it would be the southeast corner of that intersection. If you guys are um rebuilding curving, I think it would be interesting to see uh extension of the curb. Um, with, ob, obviously that will require coordination with city engineer, but something that I think would be great to look at too, if possible. Um, sorry, back to, back to the marquee, I think. Actually, I don't have anything. Something that besides, but I think it should be big.
I was interested to see. I'm glad I'm not alone. I actually like the concept of it being large and that was some features, but it's neither character nor the building.
It'll be grand and novel, but safe.
Better words.
Yeah. You know, and this is somewhere that the H R C I know from working with them, they, they have a lot of knowledge and I would gladly refer to them and to, to them. I'm wondering if you.
No, I think with the medallion, you could do a nice, that, but narrow, but that would not fly.
You should.
Sorry, guys.
I think using the medallions, you could get a nice wide, but not um historic or quasi historic, so if you marquee that would go great with the building. I see you um referenced the one that's on uh the hotel.
Yep.
And yeah, that kind of thing would be great.
Yeah, that one's a great reference in the niche for it. Um, would you anticipate having any like lettering on it or is it just an automatic structure?
Uh, it's, it's uh under, under debate, under discussion at this time. Um, yeah, I'm not sure what sort of messaging or lighting it could, it could implement or if it would just, you know, a cover, so that's something for us to refine and bring back next time.
Would it be glass or would it be solid?
Uh, I, I believe if, if anything, it would reference the historic cast iron uh work that produced the historical original marquee as well as some of those references that we, that we shared. So, um, yeah, as, as close as possible to that cast iron integrity that is so um, so localized to this area. And the, there's an existing cast iron fence just in the southwest corner of the courtyard. It's a very small section, but that's completely remaining. And if anything, it would be several feet away from this marquee. So they could kind of play off of each other architecturally their materiality.
Oh, I mean, it could be cast iron and glass.
Yeah.
It's a true.
Exactly.
That hasn't really been sketched in anywhere, right?
Correct, yeah.
Additionally.
Yeah, the marquee was the most conceptual component um for our application, but under, under development, yes.
Thoughts on it extending almost to the curb line, how far out?
Have to see what they come up with.
I, I think it would only uh enhance, enhance the character. I think it'd be really cool to see it as, as large as practical.
It's really feasible.
Yeah, and, and you know, like the, in theory, the curb line is where the vehicles ought to be, but you know, people parking, like, want to give yourself, I'm sure, a little cheaper. The in theory, the curb line is where the vehicles ought to be, but you know, people parking like wanna give yourself, I'm sure, a little cheaper, but I think otherwise. Really. Get creative.
Okay, uh, so next portion of uh proposal is HVAC. This means I I would simply uh take on the comments from HRC about clothing and things. Don't have really novel there. I don't think, I think ultimately you're trying to achieve a balance.
Yes.
And this is really the best of both. It's it's the right compromise, you know, it's not perfect. You can see it a little bit from your street level view uh views that you showed. But the the benefits you're gaining seem to me like it's worth it.
I agree.
Yeah. I looked at the, I was like, oh, is he really gonna stick out that much from the alley side? And I looked at the street view and I was like, oh, there's already just up on the ground level. It really does.
Yeah.
But I think it's fine.
If you look down at any of the alleys, that's what you're seeing on any building in our house. Whether it's exhaust louvers, vents, fans, to to exist.
Also, Roddy, you know, HRC, they. They're uh really.
Uh, could you remind me, we, Rick, we talked about.
So you are.
Yes, well, that.
Yeah, that's convenient.
It's more letters than that. It's but um they're the committee, we are the commission for historic matters.
They're the advisory.
Correct, they're the advisory committee, but we also talked about whether we should be formally adopting or taking on recommendations from them through some mechanism.
I I.
Could you use your mind? Sorry. Pulling you into this. Yeah, I think last time we did do a formal adoption for. Another project and I think it makes it for a better record. Um, you know, it's it's a simple voice vote really, uh, and uh, so uh, I would prefer that you do it that way. That that the committee itself or the the advisory committee has no power and you, when you act as the historic review commission. You know, you're you're. You are e- either recommending adopting their recommendations or or not and and allowing them to uh be the voice of the planning commission. Sure. Okay, so I I I'd let the project kind of reach maturity because I think we'll go back to them and then once we have a full set of comments, I would recommend we do that, make a motion at that point. Um, the work inside the building is really outside of our um, you know, purview as planning. Uh, so otherwise, other other comments. Um, so for this meeting, we could declare the application complete and declare ourselves the agency in terms of actions.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Or which one?
Well, can I do that separately?
Can we, I think we could do a motion for both declaring the application complete and ourselves the agency separate, 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 okay.
I'd like to make a motion to declare the application.
And I make a motion that we declare the agency.
We need a second person.
One at a time.
Okay, thanks. All in favor of declaring the application complete? Hi, thank you. And then.
And I do that.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, um. Anything else? Otherwise, uh, I I'll make a motion to schedule if you're comfortable with it for uh the April planning commission meeting.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, is it? Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion uh that we schedule this for a public hearing on April seventeenth. Uh, hiring commissioning. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Likewise. Appreciate your time.
Okay, our final agenda item for the evening is CLPC twenty twenty four zero 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 eight or one twenty five River Street for uh the Taylor. Taylor two. So welcome and thank you for patience in this point. Thank you, everybody, in attendance for patients who get through the agenda.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Uh, my name is, my name is Roger Keating. I'm from LaBella Associates uh here tonight on behalf of. The uh Penrose and the Chover Apartments project to uh give you guys an introduction to the project. Uh, allow Penrose to to introduce themselves again, talk a little bit about the program. And also with the data architects, the data was the architect of the first campus project they're here tonight. Uh, our team uh to to kind of go over um the next phase of this project. Uh, just a little backstory before I let everybody get all up here. Um, right now, we have the the tailor. Or the the two Taylor towers right now are in construction across the street from this project site. Ultimately, the goal of the project is to redevelop, redevelop that Taylor three and four, which is fair about. With today, those folks will be moving over to the new building that's constructed. And then um then we'll look to um take the existing buildings, three, four down and then. Build a new project, application. So with that, Noah is here from Penrose tonight, just gonna say a few things about the project and then I'll hop back in. For the site plan real quick, general closing development. So, thank you. So.
Thank you, brother. Uh, good evening. My name is Noah Breber. I'm a senior developer with Penrose. Um, yeah, so as Roger was saying, where he here tonight is really the sort of the natural progression of the full Taylor redevelopment. Uh, Taylor one under construction, as you mentioned, we're here to start the process with Taylor two. Which both phases combined will represent four hundred and fifty units comprising two hundred and sixty million dollars of uh riverfront housing. Uh, project. Um, that will be essentially a hundred percent affordable effectively um to a wide range of of incomes across the board. As Roger mentioned, Taylor one is about fifty percent complete, anticipating to complete the third quarter this year, and we'll start lease up there. Really folks from Taylor three, four will over there along with some other folks. Um, we're here to start the process for Taylor two tonight. Um, later this year, we intend to apply for financing to the state. That process is about twelve months, and so we anticipate to close on that financing and start construction um in the fall of twenty twenty five. Uh, the design you're gonna see tonight uh from Roger and from from Jen from Datner uh is a really nice and sort of, I think, really thoughtful. Design that uh matches the geometry of the bridge and really takes into account uh which Roger and Jen both what's what's really a very unique site in town. With bridge, waterfront, some changes of the other infrastructure that the city together. Um, we really tried to come up with a plan that brings uh a lot of gravitas to that area with with the bridge crossing. Uh, but also deals with the challenges that such you say. So um that, thank you very much for asking the agenda tonight. Back over to Roger.
Thanks, Noah. So um the project site is about four acres in size. Um, as Noah indicated, um, it's a unique site. Uh, because we have a lot of uh railways and things like that all surrounding us. So we have public railways where the ramps do all pull over the primary street bridge. Very street as well as run street, vision in Congress all around the project site today. Um, as part of the plan, uh, as I mentioned before, which you see on the screen, there was kind of the existing additions plan where we show the existing. Taylor three, four buildings. Those will ultimately be uh removed to make way for the new project. Um, the the proposed project in the future here. Proposed projects, uh, as Noah had indicated, it's gonna bring around uh three hundred and eight new new units to the. Taylor three and four site, let's jump around a little bit, sorry. Um, there we go. Um, and. It really, the plan really does work with the the safety constraints that we have uh to help there. The project will have uh two new buildings uh with access off of uh division and to Congress. As well as um we have been working with fire a little bit about getting additional accesses out onto run street. Um, the plan will also have a combination of parking where we are parking both as a surface lot outside. As well as some underneath parking on the on the ground level of of the uh the two buildings. We also are have a luxury of having all of our infrastructure right surrounding us with all these railways. So we have access to uh water, sewer and stormwater as part of this project. Uh, worked with fire a little bit uh earlier this week, just uh making sure we've got good hydrant locations and spacing. So we, Eric. And the team had a conversation that pointed me to those guys. We were able to uh kind of work through some of their concerns and things that they would want. Um, and so we're adding some of that to the project. We also have uh access to sanitary sewer out here, which makes easy connections. But one of the good things about this project is currently there's a few combined sewer connections right there on our site. It's part of the plan development, end up being able to read, be able to disconnect those, so we'll be able to help those combined sewer um discharges out here. And then lastly, we have stormwater management. We're over acre plan, so we are required to capture and treat stormwater. Currently, the site's untreated. Um, we'll be able to capture and treat that before we discharge back down as part of New York State DC program. Uh, we mentioned the parking. We have a hundred and fifty parking spaces. Once again, tar painted out, bicycle storage. Uh, Commissioner Raf would be happy to know. We have about a hundred and ten uh bicycle parking spaces um in the building. Um, they're all gonna be on that garage level on the lowest level for for tenants um as well. And, you know, just to to close here really quick before I send it back to to Jen is. The site does have a lot of unique strengths to it. Uh, we mentioned the bridge. Um, we have New York State DOT um easements. That are that are traversing the project site as well as our county sewer. So I think Jen did a really, and and the whole Datner team, um, did a really uh great job of coming up with a unique solution to those, to to all those like constraints. In creating this um, you know, per building approach, which I think provides some um great views and access um to the road. So with that, turn it over to Jen, then we'll come back to the board and question the comments. So, thanks.
All right. Um, so as Roger mentioned, um, I'll just kind of filter the site plan a little bit and then go over the elevations, um, which are very much in schematic design right now. Um, so part of our application is that because of the easements, we will make some variances purely because of the the bridge construction and the DOT easements. Um, along here. So we're actually setting back the building roughly thirty for bulk of those buildings. What we intend to do is landscape this area, you know, create pathways, create connections from River Street down to the waterfront. We thought that was really important to maintain that access and also we can't build there with the DOT. Another variance that we're gonna need um is a street drainage along the Vision Street because we have this large sewer easement uh right cutting across our property. Um, so a lot of the variances that we're gonna be looking for are because of these easements that already exist on the site. Um, as Roger mentioned, we really wanted to um design the buildings according to the the existing bridge structure that we know is gonna remain. There are plans to redo the bridge here, um, but we know that the retaining walls are gonna have to remain. So that's kind of really what we were responding to in our design. We also felt that for the master plan, which we were a part a part of, was that we really wanted to maintain this sort of street view along River Street. Kind of create an urban edge and then a waterfront edge along Front Street. So that, you know, in the future, if you know this were to turn into a uh public access or, you know, this street were to go away. It would be more welcoming and we could have our landscaping be part of that. That was really important. Um, so for the elevations, I will get to these. Um, so again, as as Noah mentioned and as Roger mentioned, we are at a very early stage in design um for these. So these elevations are very preliminary. They're sort of void of any material selection other than ideas about creating a base. Creating a sort of body to it and creating a top, right? And those um all sort of adheres to the design guidelines that are new to the city zone. And so, um, you know, as we further develop this and as we go through the process, we will begin to develop um renderings for these. To really show that this building is going to comply with um the design guidelines for city zoning. Um, but again, so if if everyone's familiar with the site, we have a very large rate change. Um, so up at River Street, the building will appear to be six stories and down on Front Street, it will appear to be seven stories. So that's really where our parking is coming into play. So the ground floor is all uh parking. And again, this, these will sort of adhere to the same architectural identity as the upper level. It's kind of look like a parking garage that's on our intent. Um, and we really wanna make sure that it's a cohesive um facade even on Front Street. So that's really important to us. Um, we will incorporate where, you know, thinking of incorporating brick and material changes, you know, to identify and group uh windows and different uh bearing phase. Within the building, uh, we think again, that's really important. These are also really long facades, so breaking these up. Um, is really what we're gonna be focusing on next as we further our design. Um. And that's really, I think, the basic of our architectural design and I'll turn it back over to Roger.
So, um, yes, thanks, Jen. So what we're looking to do is, uh, you know, any comments, get some feedback from the from the board. Uh, ask the board to consider, you know, circulation or, you know, lead agency. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you. We're happy that anybody in the team could help answer any questions, comments, or report by that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, it's exciting to see Taylor one moving. I was here and reviewing that proposal. So it's nice to see it underway and wishing you guys the best of that project. One of the things I wanna understand um is timing, whether it's uh with regards to your goals. Or timing of uh approvals or construction or maybe considerations. I know this project is, it received some grants. Um, and bearing that in mind, I think is important uh for for the commission. You guys have any, in other words, do you have a specific start date for construction you need to achieve or completion, CO requirements in order to receive grant fundings?
Um, so uh, we do have, we do have financing from HUD, which exists on the property today that will transfer to the new project. All the financing that we're, we are working with the city to apply for a uh Restore New York grant, which uh is is going in uh start of that next week. Uh, but the financing doesn't have, there there's no, there's no financing that's committed at this moment that has a deadline to it. Uh, but we do have a tight financing schedule, although the state, although the applications are rolling at the state level. They do have, as you can imagine, a very long and competitive pipeline of deals and the state does work to sort of uh target identified. Uh, closings for deals and timelines to give their, you know, uh, supply constraint funding to. And so the schedule that we're working on now, where we're starting this process today, we're looking to start our financing application in the fall. Does get us to a timeline where we can close on our financing next year, which we're talking, you know, over, you know, eighteen months away from this point. Um, if we are not able to sort of start this process and if we have our approvals by fall of this year, potentially, we're then looking at. Another year out from twenty twenty five, be able to start this project. So, um, and if the restore work does come in for this year. That financing is tied to the other financing. So it is very, even though we're talking long drawn out schedule and sort of a development timeline, it's it's sort of all. Pressed together in a in a tight way, if that makes sense.
Sure. Is it fair to say that, you know? Sure. Is it fair to say that, you know, fall is really where where you need to be moving with approvals by that point is what your hopes are?
Yes.
And then could you just clarify, Penrose is acting as developer on behalf of?
THA, right? Penrose was designated co-developer, partner with the Housing Authority for the projects, the Housing Authority is a development partner in this project as well.
So does Penrose have ownership at all with the property or of of the operations?
Yes, Penrose, so the Housing Authority ground leases the property, ground leases the property to the. To the entity that has the tax credit development, and within that, within that ownership entity is. Penrose and the Housing Authority as well as the tax credit investor that provides the affordable financing for the project.
Okay. So I guess I'll, I'll look to commissioners, I have a long list of specific things, I, and I apologize in advance, when I reviewed everything, I went. Started with the drawings, went back to the EAF forms, back to the drawings, my comments are kind of scattershot when I get into them. But there's high level reactions, comments, thoughts.
I have, I have a couple, one comment and one question. Flood plane, how, where is it, how is it affected, how's project affected by it?
Right, and I, I was actually going to mention that and then forgot to about the elevations, part of the reason. Our cellar has parking in it is because of the flood plain, so our flood plain, the blue line is the hundred year flood plain. Right now for the old maps, the red line is the new flood plain for Troy zoning, so it's. Twenty seven point two feet. Site two, which is here, will be at the first floor, which is the occupiable floor, will be at twenty nine feet. And site, building three will be at the twenty seven point two feet, which is the first occupiable floor. So again, that's kind of why the cellar is parking is because we cannot build in that, in that area under that elevation, which. So that elevation is right at street level, which is why you see six stories of that bridge.
Okay, thank you. I just envisioned floating cars. My only other comment is, I know you're still in the beginning of a design case and you do have these wide buildings. Please don't get cute. I, you know, please make it, you don't have to have all these cutouts and voids and whatnot. Please make it as, as.
We're, we're working on that.
Suzanne, district wise, it's just worth noting that in a, a big map, it is part of. This area of waterfront, waterfront and flood risk overlay, so there are specific design requirements of being in that area.
Okay. I hear it.
Yeah, echoing that comment, as a huge is. You know, we have a lot of large buildings in Troy. Sort of buildings, and I think trying to, they don't have that tired new development that the city probably, I'm sure, in any city, they don't look. I don't, I mean, I don't feel, the new development is keep looking at all, but just something, you know, having something that looks strong, have some, have something that. It can be broken up, you mentioned breaking it up. But yeah, avoiding that. Velvet, cheap look that we see everywhere, and, and I think, you know, what we looked at for Taylor one. Has, has that strength, has the, the toned down a bit, it's, it blends in a bit more, I think. I'm, I'm looking forward to that, that project, being completed and being able to hopefully reference it for what we want to see more of, so. I know this is a totally different situation and we'll probably talk about the orientation of the buildings a little bit more, but. Just on the architecture comments, my reference.
That actually, design wise, just general concept and design, I recall from when we reviewed the Taylor one project. A much different design, some of the renderings, I actually, and going back into our old photos and. Some of the other commissioners, I think it was just Sue and Sarah were here as well, they saw this. This, to me, is, is the type of activation of a space that I really hope to see. I remember being really excited, looking at this and looking at all the green space, the shared public space, rooftop activation. In this, that I think conceptually is definitely missing from what you're showing in, in this new design. As soon as I dug into your current plans, I recognized that you were really limited by some of the easements, and that controls your, your geometry of the building. But even in that, I went back and, and looked at what was shown, and at least as it relates to the sanitary sewer easement, I think. That reflected in the previous design too, that kept that as non-permanent structures being built over, it was just walkway space, it looks like to me. So I'm hoping that as this design matures and evolves, you bring back some of what was here, when we looked at this previously. I'm specifically looking at some presentation from January twenty of twenty twenty one, and I'd encourage the rest of the commissioners to go back into the. Share drive, look, just search Taylor apartments, and go look through the old versions of this to see how it's changed. Yeah, certainly, that is, I think, what they're trying to suggest to move towards. In general, I have no issue, I think the curved design is interesting, it's, it's thematic or reminiscent of the. Royal Crescent in Bath, it has that kind of curved feel, I think more can be done to either. Reinforce that or make it modernized somehow. There were some application issue questions I have, I'll get to those, I still want to keep on the high level reaction to this. One thing I did want to ask you is, have you guys conducted any community outreach meetings or engagement with current tenants or just the, the neighbors?
Yes, so we, we have had previous meetings with tenant association regarding Taylor two just. Earlier this week, we had a, a follow-up meeting with the tenant association, and then. Rob can speak a little bit about this as well, but the plan is after tonight, with, you know, just first part of seeking. The agency designation, is to have a, a follow-up meeting with the public, sort of talk about Taylor projects. Soliciting feedback and comments before back to this body again.
Is there a reason you guys chose to come as an agenda item straight for seeker and site plan review as opposed to sketch conference? Or some concept review?
The idea is with the seeker process getting the clock started. Is, it helps the applications and everything as it relates to the financing, as it's showing that the product is taking the next steps, and so. It, it works in their favor as it relates to going about the process that he just spoke to earlier.
I can talk for a long time on this one, you guys go ahead.
I see you're, you're listening, I, you know, I think you all have sent it. I, and I just want to clarify on that earlier comment, I, I think. You made a really great point about what was shown to us initially, and I understand that one of, another constraint, not only the, the easements, but. It's also the retaining walls of the bridge that we did not anticipate needing to remain or. Was not shown being remained in the, in the concept, and so I understand that that is a constraint. But I, I certainly want to echo Roddy's comment in that these look. Very, very different, you know, I would say decades apart from one another, and I think that's a problem. And I don't think that's the same comment that I was making, and, and I won't speak for Suzanne, but the. My comment earlier was about, specifically about the architectural direction we're going to. But I, at the same time, to echo Roddy's comment about the green space, about the ways that the. Building seems more thoughtfully dragged with the river, and I think to take a few steps back. I think that's one of the things that's missing from this. Site plan that's being shown now is, obviously, it's orienting itself towards the roadways. And obviously, there's the sewer easement, which I would like clarification on what you kind of can't do on that sewer easement, but why, why did you choose to. Not orient it more towards the river from, it's purely this gray and this is buildable footprint or?
We did look at a scheme where we were facing the river front, and we really felt after exploring the scheme where we're responding to the bridge that. Not only from an architectural standpoint, from activating the waterfront to, you know, and. Again, we're, we're right now looking at, with our, working with our land state architect on activating that space that's sort of open right now, like. Again, this is all very preliminary, this will all really be programmed with land state, and that's our intent, similar to the image you're referencing. But as we were looking at it, one is buildable area that were allowed because of the easements. But also in terms of fill analysis, our flood risks, all of that, it would, it made it really difficult. Siding wise, to put the face towards the front, towards front. There are also some zoning items that would. Cut back the amount of units that we would have if we were to have put our primary base on front.
And you mentioned you're going after several variances, are, are there any variances associated with height?
No variances, variances associated with height.
Is that, is height something that was discussed at the public meeting?
In terms of when we met with.
With the, with the.
Um, I don't, I don't think we had mentioned, I don't think there was any concern, right now it will look and feel. Going to be shorter than Taylor one.
Yeah.
On River Street.
And that, to me, seems like a constraint that ought to be more of an opportunity. I don't think that Taylor one is too tall at all personally, especially with the elevation of the bridge and how. Most people are oriented towards the buildings in that manner when they're coming into short water relief. I think it, it's admirable that it blends in, but it also might be an opportunity if you all can. Utilize height to increase the number of units that can fit on the square footage of the little surface that you have. And that allows you to get more creative with orienting the buildings, providing more green space. Those are all things that I would be open to. I, I'm curious what other commissioners think about that.
Yeah, I, I will just say to that, it is a constructability concern as well in terms of cost, but also we're doing the two over four instruction. Right now, that's what we have for the budget, so that's part of the reason that we're not going higher than that six stories.
Okay, your suggestion was considering bone height, yeah, you know.
So, and within the RWF, RWF dash O. Section, when you dig into the details there, there's incentive that would allow you another ten feet over height if you provided the multi-use pathways and. Easement in perpetuity for, for that. And the question of, like, even when you get into those details, it talks about story setbacks above the surface floor. Fourth, fifth, sixth, in this case, would have setback requirements of each level to minimize view shadow impact basically. Something to consider in the design. Yeah.
Oh, I strongly agree higher. The biggest thing I saw when I saw this plan, I liked the curves, I liked the shape. I think it's a good solution, it. My biggest problem was, you know, the nice curved buildings, all the views from the apartments of the west side look out into a surface parking lot. And I know you have a hundred and fifty spaces for three hundred and. Twelve units or something. It's a shame you couldn't have gotten all the parking inside the building, maybe have two stories of it. Possibly add, have unexcavated spaces, could they be excavated with a retaining wall? Then it could be a true green space.
Yeah, you were discussing cut and fill considerations, the, to that end of, you know, how you would change grading and excavation to support a different layout or. I'm not sure I follow why moving buildings on the site. Towards the area where it's more graded and flat away from the higher elevation would involve more excavation. I'm not sure if I'm exactly capturing what Warren's saying in terms of suggestion for potential other design, but. Reacting to both of them.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of backwards, as I said, there is to also. How the flood plain and everything also works here, you know, from that perspective, of being able to. With the, one of the alternative designs that we had at one point, pulled the building all the way down, we ended up having to. Work the flood elevations as part of creating that board, you're approaching the river, so there was presenting some challenges there. Also, just with the way the, the buildings was sitting in here, we also had structural considerations with. The, the adjacent roadways, there were also something working with the DOT with the, the bridge apartments. So a lot of that was all factored in as it relates to where the cut and toes were taking place, as you bring that building down and forward. The finish floor where everybody is entering and exiting the building as pedestrians all the way up to twenty seven two. So when you bring that finish floor all the way down to the waterfront there, you're seventeen, eighteen feet. Above the ground is where your first floor is, whereas if you pull those entrances and everything up. Or closer to River Street and the intersections, or closer to Gray, so you'd have these really odd. Ways of being able to get in and out of the building when we bring that building all the way down, so it, it, it was a lot of things, and I also want to just make sure. Yeah, it does look different, the bridge concept that was visioned, you know, years ago now, was, you know, a path that we were all on. And we're still going to get the great opportunity to have River Street on, you know, the north end and the south end reconnecting in some way. Because it's been fractured by this bridge for, you know, when they built it. But unfortunately, we're not getting that really squared up effect, we're hoping as part of that plan and with the vision that those slip lanes. Would just be gone, they would go away, and, and they're not, they're just, they're not, they're not going away now, that's really one of the things that drives that, because the way the plan sits. You know, we're talking about a pretty big wedge here, that's just where those buildings were before, creating street walls is one of the things that we were really. Shooting for, we're not going to have that opportunity with the way the bridge sits, but we're doing the best we can if, if it goes up top in those situations.
This is a good opportunity to talk about that for a minute, because, I mean, I know I'm not very aware of. What the concepts look like for redesign and reconfiguration of the transportation corridor. I know it's not your project, but anything you could share to enlighten us or color in with the future of that looks like.
Providing the information that's been given us to us through, you know, coordination, presented on plans, you know, the best we can, you know, we're not designers though, so. You know, what's readily available for them, but.
What, what, you mentioned the slip lanes not going away, do you have a, did you learn that recently? Because I know the structure of the bridge, that was, you know, from, from looking at the concept that was shared years ago. Structure of the bridge was being imagined, that it, that would, that would all get to go away, I understand that that has changed, but. My understanding is the goal is still to create a, a traditional intersection, you mentioned.
Yes, absolutely, if you have traditional intersection, it'll.
Essentially without slip lanes.
The slip lane would be more pedestrian, so they're going to use it still, but it just won't be the same.
You're saying the structure of the slip lane, not the use of it.
The structure, right, yes, it's the bridge support.
Russ, is this something that's on your desk, is the redesign of this interchange kind of something you're involved with yet? We, we haven't been provided that as yet. Even at a concept level, have you seen, we haven't been provided, no, okay. The, we will, we will be. We didn't even have a few weeks.
And there was an announcement of, of an award for the cities of Troy, one of the related to the.
Yep, yes, there is.
I just wanted to follow on a comment that was made previously about the parking and putting it all underground, part of the comments and part of the. Conversation with the tenants and part of the design of this project as a sort of a, even though it is separately financed and built as one, one wholesale development. Part of the conversation was because of. Uh part of the conversation was because of some of the parking that was being lost on Taylor one, bringing some of that parking to Taylor two. For the Taylor one residents, and so there's more parking on Taylor two for the benefit of both of the projects, and so that's why you have some extra. Parking outside as well in addition to.
You mentioned earlier that, you know, this project is gonna be affordable across many different types of people in Troy. Um would you, are you interested in talking a little bit more about that structure for us?
Yes, I just want to find out because all the numbers are on here for the different, for the different uh. So this project has three hundred, is going to have three hundred and eight units. Of that three hundred and eight, um. A hundred and twenty five are going to uh be designated as sixty percent or less of area median income. And they're going to be uh uh replacement units effectively for the Taylor units that are there today. So those units will have vouchers from HUD, from Housing Authority um for the potentially the the residents. Of Taylor three and four today, they will have to be relocated, they have the opportunity the first rate to go back to those specific hundred and twenty five units. Um and then there's another hundred and twenty five of the units that are going to be for uh folks who have incomes that are between sixty and eighty percent of the area median income. For this county. Um and then fifty eight units uh will be considered effectively market. But the state actually has a program that subsidizes market rate units, which are going to be between a hundred and a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Um but the beautiful thing about that, the great thing about this program is even though that's effectively market rate today, the um. The increases on those rents in the future are capped, and so even though it's a market rate today, if in five and fifteen years. Market rate of Troy or this, you know, this capital region continues to rise, those, the the increases of those rents effectively cap. And so really what you have is a project that is effectively a hundred percent affordable long into the future, thirty plus years. Um for a whole different range of folks, so you have, you have folks that make them sixty percent of their immediate income, but folks that are uh. Nurses, teachers, uh you know, firemen, police officers here in the city, uh you know, looking for affordable housing. That will offer the opportunity to find that housing uh with Taylor projects.
What kind of response did you hear during their engagement sessions from current tenants about the concept of moving? Into either Taylor two and then into another unit, or what what was the reaction like?
Um well, there's, there's a lot of layers of of the reaction there, but effectively in order to go through the these. Uh these buildings and the land is restricted by HUD, and so in order to uh get approval to demolish. Uh the buildings that have folks living in them or just uh unrestricted buildings. Um and to relocate them is a a full scale, uh you know, codified and regulated process, and so we are in the. We are in the middle of that process right now. We have conditional approval from HUD to demolish Taylor three and Taylor four. There's still a lot of work has to be done, there's still a lot of conversation with tenants. Um you know, there are sure mixed feelings across the range, but part of this process is having meetings with them. Um making sure they know what's coming, getting their feedback on any questions about Taylor one, what the relocation is gonna look like. How we're gonna support them in in their move, how we're gonna notify them, you know, there's, there's a whole bunch of steps that have happened there. Um but really, we're just trying to keep them as informed as possible and make sure that they know that they have the right to Taylor one when it's complete. Once Taylor two is built, um you know, they have the right to come back here if they want, but obviously. Anyone moving their home is a difficult, challenging process, um but in order to build Taylor two, we are gonna have to demolish the current buildings and relocate. You know, at least temporary.
Will that timeline work out in that way? Will they be able to move into Taylor one uh before the demolition of Taylor three or four?
Yes, so part, so part of the sort of the sequence of events here of the larger scale development, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Um we are looking to complete construction in the third quarter, you know, early fourth quarter potentially of this year. Um we are working with HUD on the uh relocation, demolition of Taylor three. So that as Taylor one uh starts to become available against, you know, occupancies. We are, we are working with the residents, so Taylor three and four. Give them the notice, keep them informed about the application process, how that works, help them, help them apply, help them fill out the forms. So that they are ready to move into Taylor one as soon as it's, as soon as it's, you know, ready for occupancy.
And how many, how many units are each other pouring in?
Taylor one. One forty one.
One forty one, and how many units are in existing though, three or four?
Uh well, there's a hundred, hundred and twenty five folks there.
So there's plenty of.
Yes, yes, everyone, everyone has the opportunity to.
But they still have to go through an application process to get in a Taylor one.
Yes, because the the project is one hundred percent uh tax credit, it is internal, it is a federal uh program. That has very sort of heavy compliance regulations, and so they will, right, they will have to apply. Um but they have the opportunity.
Are there conditions that could could preclude somebody who currently lives in there from uh. Getting through the application process at Taylor one?
Um you know, not under normal circumstances, there are, you know. Perspective now and then, um. Credit sort of the normal property, you know, normal property management protocols are are still there, but um would have to be fairly egregious, I think.
How do the units compare between uh the current structures and either Taylor one or Taylor two?
Are you asking, are you asking um the the design of the Taylor one, Taylor two units, the one versus Taylor three and four existing?
Yes.
We we can, we can get, we can absolutely get you the current floor plans of three and four, and obviously we have the one and two. We don't have that, you know, prepared for you today, unfortunately, um but we can absolutely get.
What are you trying to understand?
Um really trying to put myself in the mind of somebody living in one of the current units and looking at the new structures. And just how they may view these these projects.
The interior of the apartments?
To me, and and not just the interior, but the project as a whole, kind of as a result of that, or how the space works for them.
Yes.
I'm, I'm really familiar with them, I've. I did a gut rehab of building three and seven and uh did work in building four earlier than that. And the the unique quality of those buildings is the structural system. Which places columns in no orderly grid whatsoever, as I'm sure you've observed, so. The layout of the apartments is um driven by this structure. Um which causes lots of skinny hallways and hard minimum bedrooms and. And tiny windows. No.
And and I would add, I would add, you know, on on top of that, um so these new units are going to be very modern, they're built to all of the states. Design requirements, which are, you know, an evolving set of standards, um you know, to meet the latest and greatest, uh you know, housing model. In addition to that, just outside of the units themselves, these new buildings will have ample amenity program space. That are not available to the residents today, um for lots of different things, um including, you know, rooftop and all of the space that will be there in Taylor two. Um and all the things happening in the building with community program space.
Yeah, that's all, that was all very helpful.
Would you, would you like us to follow up with Taylor two, three, four?
Not necessarily, I just wanted a general concept and relationship.
And you know, a lot more than.
Other commissioner comments?
Uh yeah, I just wanted clarification and a couple more questions. So if I'm looking at this plan, we see the area that is unexcavated on the east side. Correct, that you can't get parking because. What is stopping you from putting a retaining wall? Buying more real estate, more parking inside, because there are entrances from the, from the ridge?
Yeah, it's, it's a combination of a couple of things, just it's um the amount of excavation we would have to do there. But also the fact that we wanna try to limit the supportive excavation during construction. To avoid anything happening to the uh retaining wall structure.
So how would you get the foundations in for that line of the building?
That would pretty much be at um great, so that would be at like the twenty nine. So. It'd be, yeah, I'm sorry, it'd be a slab on, slab on grid.
And if you try to get more parking inside. And reduce some of these large parking lots in the potential green space, you know, on the riverside. If you look at having a second story of parking, I realize you'd have to have two different entrances, one on the lower. The way it's shown, and maybe something on the upper level on the east side.
Yeah.
I know it gets.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little tricky, one just the thought wise, but also we do have units on that first floor, which end up being at the second floor. Cause those are all facing, so we have units that are facing, are sort of put at this end and this end of the building, so that. They aren't actually at the first floor when you're out.
So. Yeah, so basically the second floor, which we're not seeing, the housing, housing floors, there's no communal spaces or. Shared spaces in the program.
There are shared spaces, um so we have shared spaces along the inner side of the courtyard on that first floor. Um of both buildings, so each building has their own uh business center, um community room, all of that, and um. Those are located on the first floor and then six.
So I guess that's what I'm getting at, but um comment that you could possibly go higher. Could you have some parking slash on a second floor that we don't see here? Could you have more parking? Mixed in with communal space and no housing, and then start the housing. You know, another layer, level up.
This is something that we could definitely look at, um we are very limited, this, this is uh. Besides some of the market rate stuff, we are limited by our financing available at the, you know, state federal level. Certainly.
I'm gonna say that, and I think it'd be well worth, uh worth the effort to. Create the green space along the river, make places attractive as possible, and bounce it on the level if you can do it, that that's definitely worth a serious looking.
Yeah, so some of the challenges we get into when we go up to certain levels, um have to look at it, but uh we start to trigger where we have to do. Or um you know, not a possible podium, less wood, that really increases total cost of the project. At the amount um and and starts to make again, you know, this is a spending. Uh cost of projects, um and there's a lot of financing for it, you start to add a lot of that. That podium for these portable, portable rents becomes challenging.
We would have to switch to a steel stud structure of.
So right now it's balloon thing?
Yeah, essentially.
And uh. So what are the, I said, I think you said it's panelized construction, so I thought they were, first I thought they were those concrete panels with tin brick.
Yeah.
You were saying something much lighter.
It's similar to Taylor one, if you've seen any of the constructions happening, it's like a eight by the floor height. Wood panel that comes in, it's all panelized, they come in and stay.
So if it's on a truck and it's just.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not thin brick, the brick is outside that, so it's up to the insulation and air. And then the uh the side material.
So real brick.
Real brick.
Um. And just to go back to parking, yeah, assuming, you know, this is, we don't go to what the scheme I was just trying to promote here. Let's just say we're the left of the exterior parking board is, first of all, could it be permeable?
Uh that's something we can definitely take a look at, um we are in some areas of the city here where those soils are really competitive down there, but um. Something we need to take a look at, for sure, for sure, you know, um done in other parts of the city, um so it's something that's. That's a possibility, I think when we also, um you know. Add some more landscaping to this plan, I think that's gonna help, you know, show a little bit more how the green space. And how they wanna activate a few more of the spaces, and I think we can, you know, we can also look at revisiting with the team. Just a little bit of our account two, just to see if there's maybe some spaces that we can, that we can work with, maybe uh reducing that people. You know, these spots, so we do wanna make sure that we are um listening to the tenants, you know, that. You know, that they they feel that we're giving enough about parking, but at the same point, maybe there's a few that we can look at to help solve it in some spots, so.
Yeah, one, just on that number, so, you know, I know you said some of the parking is gonna be a neighbor. First base, um but how do you come up with a hundred and fifty when it's three hundred and something units? So how, for example, do they have a designated spot, or is it first come, first served, or?
It comes out of the.
No, we, we, we don't, we don't generally as a practice assign spaces, um potentially depending on who the area, where the project is and. Challenges of, you know, people trying to park in that site, we might designate residence spaces versus some visitor spaces. Because of the unique location on the waterfront, it's unlikely people are trying to park here to to go up to other parts of the city, but um. Now, it wouldn't be uh sort of designated anyway, but they all are for, you know, both the residents of Taylor one.
And we, I mean, we have done uh traffic parking study to support the project as well, um we go out and count the parking. In the parking lots to get an idea, you know, even at night, see what the parking lot uh would be more full, um so. Use that with consideration for what we come up with.
And Roger, you put that, excuse me, you put that T D M P together?
Yeah, there's the application package.
I I reviewed that, and it does just basically at the end assert uh the amount of parking used right now is far less than that. And demand, and therefore supplying less than the eighty five percent, um you know, worst case, demand should be adequate. I guess it's just a subjective assertion, it just kind of leans on that. When I review it, is that right? I mean, it's not, basically you have a calculated number that needs to be provided, this provides lower than that. But it justifies it by saying the current usage doesn't show full occupancy.
Correct, yeah, so it's like anything, I teach, I T E trip generation manual will spit out a number, but if you actually go out. Count cars at intersections or go parking lots and count, you know, um how how the spaces use. You you get, you get better data in uh affordable housing category and I T E manual. Seems like it's not based on uh not a lot of studies right now, so I think uh by going out and actually, you know, counting cars in the parking lot. We get a better handle as to how it's actually used than than what, you know, happens elsewhere in. In a study that may have taken place in the city completely different. I think we have a great opportunity here with, you know, ease access to public transportation, we have a bike network, a share network that surrounds this entire area. It's easy to walk to tons of services and businesses, so I think our property is a little different, if you can be honest, just that some of the areas that may be. That elsewhere.
Were the existing lots um near three and four intended originally to serve the buildings that were vacant and demolished. Wanted to, meaning uh where I'm going with that is, could the ratio you're seeing in terms of usage be artificially low? Because there's fewer buildings contributing to the usage of those lots?
Well, I think under buildings one and two, when before we tore them down, there was very little parking on the backside buildings one and two. Um very little on the backside, uh so I can't speak to how buildings one and two operated, it was. It was closed before I actually started to work there, but um but I guess it's um conceivable that somebody could park at the other, at the other location. If they, if there was a need for it, um. But if, if if we were to drive down there tonight, I'd be curious to see how many cars are parked in the parking lot, there's eighty, there's eighty car parking lot. I'd be shocked if that.
Yeah, I I go by quite often, obviously, it's just, and I go, I'm going by like P M, P hour most of the time, it's. Never, I've never. Yeah. Seen a full once replaced, but again, very, very total. Um I and I I really uh agree with Warren's comments about, you know, how. There needs to be something else in this space, and I I hope that that can be shown as the plans develop. Um I think, yeah, looking over, looking out over the riverfront and looking. Um I think, yeah, looking over, looking out over the rear front and looking down at the parking is. Um a mistake that we've made for decades in Troy and something that uh can't happen on the site. And I think there are ways that you can, uh I understand there are a lot of constraints to the site, but I think there are ways you can be creative, you know, whether that's decking. Um or some other creative solution, I also just wanna talk a little bit about the street level interaction. Uh between the building and the roadway network or the streetscape. And how, excuse me, there are, you know, some new unique characteristics as the grade of the roadway starts to go up. And so, yeah, I don't think the the concerns there are quite as strong. I think you can get away with having surface level parking there, but um something we're seeing more and more is that. Street level activation of buildings, um avoiding having um parking right up to the the street. Um on the first floor, I think that's especially important, um you know, actually one of the other move ways that the site um is adjacent to. Um, you know, trying to, trying to get this site back into the streetscape network as much as possible, again. Realizing that I'll be optimistic and um understand I have a bit more time to see the plan to provision. One one day, the the slip lane, uh the road, the way the roadway is used, we could be totally different. We wanna see the the building outlive um that change as well.
I just wanna say that, like, it's very important to us and what we can control. And what we know we can control is, you know, this corner here. Because of the way that the grid changes, and then this corner here, pretty much where the pavement is being shown. So it's really our intent that we activate as much of that as possible, but also try to activate what's happening in that across. Between the two with landscaping and pathways.
Is that hatch area still being supposed to be parking?
Um, I can't speak to it or in plan.
Which hatch area?
There's like the, there is a hatch area here that's. Um, right now, this is our sidewalk, right, Roger?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the middle structure.
Oh.
It's straight, yeah, straight there and that.
It's labeled as unexcavated.
Yeah, so this would be the slab.
Okay, so not part.
Not part.
And what, at what height would dwelling units begin?
So that the height at the dwelling units begin, it's twenty nine. But at this corner here, especially on site, on building two, is where we have to be to know. So we have retail at this corner. Yeah, that's River and Congress Street, so that's right.
And that's at grade.
That's at grade at River Street. And then the units start, you know, as you move backwards. So we have a big chunk of retail.
I don't know if it's Front Street or Division on the other side, this is the smartest division, what about that, that corner?
So that is right here, and this is right now is all on residential.
At grade.
At grade, yeah.
Great, that's.
And we have a chance here, we're actually set back a bit more because of the movements, we have a chance to anticipate the movement buffer. Between those units and the sidewalk.
Uh I have another question about the roof. Did anyone ever think about green rooms or? Is this building, are you going to leave credits of this building?
No, we're gonna go for leave credits, we are, I believe for H C R, we have to do that in private communities. Um and follow all their new guidelines that they just came out with, um so part of that, you know, we could potentially have a green room. We could have a green, potentially have a green state up there, you know, we're still.
Yeah, I think it'd be great and maybe corporate, I know it's early, but some kind of screening. Something mechanical, you know, it's on the top, which you'll see when you're, you know, coming from the bridge, on a bus, or a bike, or walking.
Yeah.
Or. And just one last thing about the façades, I know you haven't developed the materials and the. But just to really reiterate, especially on these long, you have that facade. Um, I mean, I know you know this, but you could break it up corazzale, like into the nineteen twenties kind of housing projects. Look at Jackson Heights, right, you know, you know, you have base, you have shed, you have top, doesn't have to be. Fake, new classical, they could. Break down towards the vertical, and then and then horizontally, you could do the same, similar concept, you could have changed the plan, you could have. Fields, you could have material changes, you could have corners, towers that project out, not really towers, but. You know, just. It's gonna be fun to develop, but I I know you haven't started.
Yeah, again, like I said, we're very early in schematic design, and so a lot of these things. As we're kind of coming before you and we develop these over the next couple of months, will be improving a lot of stuff.
And then also, you know, different window. Maybe some of those change in size.
Which which they are doing right now, we do, we do have a window change nuts right now. All of those things here.
I echo everything Warren said, um spot on, I think if you go back to what you had before. It and Warren, I'll show you this after, I think it's a lot of what you're talking about. Um in the original kind of use of the space, I. I almost think you need to look at rooftop activation or uh spaces, elevated spaces are the must. For this project to engage with the river and to be able to enjoy that space in proximity view, um. I have an engineering kind of question from the the forums I saw in this, I'll only hit the big ones, um. One of them was on um affluent and sanitary demand, um. That one showed a eighty, I think it was an eighty three percent noise in outflow. And then just suddenly concludes that there's no adverse impact from that. And that it should be able to support that, I I we need more justification than that.
No worries, I can certainly provide that and also, um we can provide the supplemental information that goes along with that. For wet weather flows, because we have currently um catch bases that are on the site. Um that discharge to the sanitary sewer that as part of this project would pull that out, so that's gonna help ease the burden on of. On the, you know. Of the flow, and then when we did the uh Taylor One project, when we had gone through the analysis of that. Um we have some of the information regarding, you know, capacities, um we're at the bottom of the hill here. You know, as it comes down, uh there's, it's really not a capacity issue. For the dry weather flows, it's more of a wet weather flow situation here, so that's where the emphasis. This area is gonna be to disconnect those combined sewer overflows.
Yeah.
Having, having to provide it though.
So there is intention to do sewer separation?
A hundred percent, we have catch bases on the site that currently go to the sanitary sewer that we're not gonna have.
Exactly, when I looked at the plans and the utility plans, I'm also seeing everything tie in basically at the same system, so.
Now, there's, there's ones that actually are on the, you know, for the, the buildings on the left. Uh there's catch bases that are coming down to Division Street that um happen to go right to the sanitary sewer, they don't actually go to the splitter side. So we're gonna get those all disconnected as part of this project, we're gonna put it back into our green system, so we're gonna be able to reduce those flows.
Definitely something I'd encourage, you know, to engage with Russ and with public utilities on, if you haven't already.
Yeah, we've already, we've already started the process, but um we we need to um have uh C D M Smith um involved for the. And we need escrow established so that they can review the model that we have in our flows, and then as a result of that. Um, just to clarify, we'll get a report back from them, which will, um you know, either concur or say they need to do an additional disconnect someplace else. Okay, okay?
I I had a quick question, I I apologize, when you talk about uh podium. Uh construction, what what that implies to me was, this is gonna be multi-story, this thing is sitting on the tiles. With a post tensioned podium, post tensioned reinforced concrete, right?
More than likely, yeah, it'll be concrete with two, two floors of concrete, um and then four stories.
Are you planning deep foundation system or is it spread lines shallow?
Um, I believe.
They'll probably be sitting on the tiles.
I think it's gonna be on high.
Okay.
Incorporated podium.
Yeah, yeah. Um, my only other engineering-ish question was on the traffic demand, um. It showed um that there was a comparison of eighty nine trips. Uh were being below, and it's a far below one hundred, not meriting an intersection analysis. I think an intersection analysis should be performed, especially considering the combined impact of Taylor One. Uh and these proj- projects, and knowing that that is such a critical on-ramp basically to the, to the city. Um, I think if there was ever a project that seemed to fit need for that kind of study, this would be it.
Okay, we'll um consult with um DOT on this, that request, um as we know that they're looking at this. Intersection and everything in the surrounding areas, it's their overall traffic as it relates to that, to the larger project, yeah, um. It's known that these projects are in the pipeline, so I'm just, we'll we'll just do some coordinated review with our friends at DOT. Um as it relates to that, because they they may actually even have a bigger set of data set that we put, so.
But thank you very much.
All right, are you referring to the existing, the existing roadway or the future?
I guess you would have to just analyze it on the current. You, how are you gonna study it a future, you don't have a set design yet?
Well, yeah, those are what's being considered, and that's where this project's impact will be seen, I think.
I have no idea what the timeline is for that, I'll be there.
Uh yeah, I I I don't wanna uh. They, I'm just saying that there's, if the impact for the existing configurations.
So are you suggesting by the time these structures are built, the reconfiguration of the roadway would would. Like they already be in place and so it'd be a different interception that the impact would be on?
I wouldn't bet on that, I'm just saying that there's, the existing roadways extremely, it's like not a big problem. Sorry, just. Yeah, on a traffic related note, uh are C D A residents already part of the universal access package from C D A?
I I can't, they're the universal package. Great, we will, we travel check that, okay, I I can't answer that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a very helpful thing in this context. Is for this development to look into the visibility of providing universal access to public transit. The growing program seems to be uh very popular, and it also, something that would impact. The capability of producing parking, so I'd love to see that.
All right, um any other commissioner comments, I think for today, we need to declare ourselves lead agency, we should make a decision about. Whether the application is complete or not, I think there's still some work. Though there before, I said it looks complete, but um I'd like to hear the other commissioners' position.
Yeah, um first is it would be really helpful for us to see the. Uh to River Street level floor plan to understand access points there, pedestrian. And. I think. The the curves are so responsive to. The things that nobody likes about that part of Troy that is frustrating. So I think it's imperative to make that curve. Stand on its own, like it would be what you wanna do even if the the ramps weren't there, and. That's just gonna be me articulating the building with the right material, um. Do you think you're headed towards using the same palette that you used that building one or or trying something different?
Um, we haven't fully decided, but it will be likely complementary, not exactly just.
Okay. Okay, I'll be good at that, just, actually, I will say. I don't think you would, but please don't come back to us with five or seven that are more than. Twenty percent of the facade, because we'll end up arguing about it for an hour. That's all. And I concur with your assessment of completion.
Yeah, I'll I'll agree with that, I think there's so much left uh. We did that, I'm impressed to see just in terms of context of what you guys are thinking, what direction you're going in, and I know Roddy. See his list of engineering questions that um I think ought to be addressed as well, and Eric has highlighted a lot of. Points as well in his staff reports, I'd like to see those addressed, um the last thing about the site plan or about the. Figure picture that I think could be explored is just um more. Uh more awesome freedom, but more, more um potential on Front Street. And there's also considerations in the Congress Street Bridge study about what Front Street could be, um for now, it's a. Underutilized roadway, um that potentially house on-street parking on the um east curb. All, I can't imagine, you guys are already compared us there with the project to scale, but. Could be wrong, um but yeah, I think that there's another way to eliminate. You know. Who knows the spaces that was right there, um here on site, service lots. Yeah, please come back with one.
I think that's a great point, um I was totally expecting to see some sort of multi-use path in the vicinity of Front Street. And I'm I'm not sure I see anything there.
And there is a, obviously, there's the two-way bike lane.
Right.
On the river front side, which is not, it's not a multi-use path and it's not protected, and it's something that. Most people who don't. Or a lot, or or are using bicycle loads transportation, are not comfortable, that's not the first thing they're gonna go to. So and there's a lot of people running on it, so I think that would be a wonderful off-site improvement, probably to the scale, it would not cost a lot of money at all. Um you could um do a lot, at least along the the lineage of this project. Wait.
Okay, um so I, if there's no other comments, can I have a motion uh to declare us lead agent?
Roddy, before we do that, I do see. That at least one person has said something in the chat, how do we feel about opening public comment?
If we, this is a procedural question, if we haven't declared the application complete, actually, can we declare ourselves lead agent? And also, um can, could we open public comment, I would recommend, personally, we don't, but. What does that start clockwise for us in terms of rendering a decision? I, Eric's saying he's a monkey. Yeah, not on my table.
I usually sit right here, um your question again, um does it start a clock? Which limits us to render a decision within a certain time?
No, it starts a clock on other agencies to just object to your status.
Sure.
Lead agents, but it doesn't mean within.
It doesn't mean that you have to decide the secret determination.
Okay, we. But we do, you said need to declare the application complete, or.
Before you open a public comment, I think.
But we can declare association, so can I have a motion to that?
I need to declare a show. Hi, hi, second.
Thank you, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, um and then the motion to schedule the next meeting is is next month, uh too quick or?
I leave it up to you on that question.
I know there's a lot of development left to do.
There's a lot of great comments, I, this is, this is really your feedback, so that we can uh. Eric, would it be okay if we um asked and put on that meeting now and if we feel after we have a chance to. Regroup a little bit, digest this, to pull ourselves.
Yeah.
That's the case. Okay, we, 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 we appreciate that flexibility, uh given the, the comments, so.
Uh, and would it, what would the action of the meeting, it's not setting public hearing at that point, is it?
I'd probably say the table reading until uh the April seventeenth, it's playing commission next.
Okay, so moved, um, depending on the seconds.
Again.
Thank you, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Thank you very much, uh, I think that was our last agenda item, I do have one um administrative item for us. I mentioned that last month's meeting, we need or should elect a vice chair, um, so with all. Popularity items out of the way, I think we should cover that unless. Other than it is getting late, I recommend that if you'd like to move it again, I think we're just gonna keep running into big projects, you keep on moving it, so. My recommendation is we either nominate or have a vote this evening. Right commissioners, have any feelings about this? That's a good point, it's on here as well, um, I'm, I'm open, anything I'm not, not dead set on it, but. Right commissioners, we're going to wait until we have a full, full body?
Sarah, would you accept the nomination?
Uh, I would accept it, however. I was interested in how many change because of the limit of my term.
Oh, the limit of your term?
I. Um, year and a half.
Oh. I don't mind uh voting again in the.
Okay.
I nominate Sarah for the question.
So before uh we were taking actions on that, other commissioners go okay about. Taking action without Stephen, or do we want to wait until we have a full mission?
I think we should strike all the iron.
Okay.
Senator, I see Sarah not a big.
Okay. All right, um, in that case, uh, anyone else nominations? Okay, if, uh, so motion wise, um, I think we should do it by formal motion, um, to formally move.
I'll make a motion again to nominate Sarah as vice chair.
Okay. Okay, I guess, uh, it wouldn't really be the nomination, that'd be the, the point, so.
I move to appoint Sarah as vice chair.
Okay. Then, a second, I'll go, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hopefully that works for council.
We can do it again, um, the other uh thing that we ought to talk about, there is some email about King's Landing Two and material subcommittee.
Thank you for the reminder.
I don't know who was up, I think people did actually volunteer or speak up about that.
I see it, I can review the video if you'd like, but otherwise, well, I don't know, I guess you see somebody, no.
I nominate Sarah, anyone else?
Yeah. So two or?
I'll join as well.
Okay.
Great.
I wish I would.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.